One.
Welcome to the Select Board Meeting for June 1st, 2020. This is Select Board Chair Marie Angelidis. I'll be confirming that all members and persons anticipate on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Richard Foster.
Here.
Mark Gold.
Here.
Tom Lakusha.
Here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lynn Simmons.
Hello. Hi, Tim McKenna here.
Oh, hi. Paul Pasterzik.
Here.
Debbie House.
Here.
On the agenda, please respond in the affirmative. Chief, Fire Chief Dearborn.
Here.
Rebecca Townsend.
Here.
Mary Beth Bergeron.
Here.
Lieutenant Robert Stotts.
Here.
Let's see, we have Mr. McKenna's here. How about Shepherd? Turtle Lot. Thank you. This open meeting of Long Meadow Select Boards being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency and outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth and public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of you also have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely, the order which you will find posted with the agenda. Materials for the meeting allows public bodies to move entirely remotely so long as reachable public access. Follow along with deliberations of meeting. Ensuring public access does not impede public participation. This meeting does feature public comment if someone joins the meeting. For this meeting, Long Meadow Select Boards convene via telephone, video conference via Zoom as posted. Please note, this meeting is being recorded and that some of you are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and that you're care not to screen your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Meetings are available on the agenda as posted on Long Meadow. Public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless we note otherwise. We will be, please try to mute your phone if you are not speaking, and we will be doing roll call votes. And try to state your name before you speak, because sometimes not everyone can see who you are. So let's begin the meeting. And we usually begin our meeting first with announcements. Lynn, do you have any announcements? Lynn, do you have an announcement? Might be on mute.
No, Lynn's frozen.
Oh, Lynn's frozen, okay. Well, I can say that she, part of the thing she will be discussing at the town meeting, and we do have our next on 8th, Monday, June 8th, June 22nd, we're going to have two community forums on the warrant. So you'll give you chance to ask questions on the warrant articles. And so there'll be 7 o'clock that will be posted, so you can join by Zoom. Also, this Tuesday, this Thursday, there is also a meeting for the Bliss Park Plan that is going to be available. And let's see, what time is that? That is Thursday at 7 o'clock. So please join in the forum. It's a very interesting plan. There are options, so the more of our residents that join in, the better feedback the Conway School will have on their plans. And the town will know where to go. Are you available for COVID-19 update?
Can I jump in for a second?
Sure.
Just on a notice of vacancies for the Finance Committee. There are, there are two vacancies on the Finance Committee. They are both three-year terms. Interested residents or voters may apply. The applications are online under, under the Select Board webpage. They are due on Tuesday, June 9th. We will be doing interviews, I believe shortly thereafter. I think the first interview is set up for June 11th. And then the following week, if folks are interested, they may also contact me at 565-4136.
Okay, thank you. Any other announcements that I might have missed? June 16th is the, the town election. We will be having, the polls will be open, but we're encouraging people to fill out a request for absentee ballots that is allowed under the COVID-19 crisis. And I believe those were being sent out with is that correct, Paul? The trash calendars that everyone should be receiving also that you can you should be able to receive one of those absentee ballots, request forms. If you haven't registered to vote, you can do that at a police station, because that is open to the public and information will be available there online also. And of course, we'll be talking further about our annual town meeting later in the meeting. Chief Dearborn, do you have, can you give us an update on COVID-19?
Can you guys hear me okay?
We can see you.
Okay, yeah. Finally got a haircut, so I'll be able to come back on. So getting everybody, this is Fire Chief John Dearborn. Thank you for the opportunity to update the board on our community's response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Not including our early housing and nursing facilities. And according to latest data, we have five active cases in the residential part of Long Meadow. Thought tonight provide a breakdown of the percentages. Out of 171 cases recorded in Long Meadow, 40% of the cases have been in the community. 52 have been in the nursing home, so 52%, and 8% have been in our other congregate housing. The number, number of COVID-related EMS calls in the residential part of the community continues to decline, which is great news. In the recovery process, we prepared our first FEMA claim under the declaration. We do anticipate scheduling a claim every 30 days moving forward. We've received or are applying for funds under the CARES Act. These funds offset EMS expenses and EMS revenue and other town expenses. Reconstitution and reopening over the last two weeks, we have put in place any of the Phase 1 requirements for employees in certain services and recreation. Which brings on more town services, along with several businesses, including some limited restaurant retail opening. Actually, we just received the governor's executive order on that. It was signed at 2:20 today, so we'll still need to digest that. There's a, the Phase 2 jump is pretty substantial. We're working on longer-term plans for our facilities and schools to ensure they're prepared for opening. We do anticipate some school guidance in the next couple of weeks, but we're trying to get ahead of the curve on that. We continue work on plans for town meeting and town elections. The town meeting and June election plans are significantly complete. Just pending some review. We're also looking at both the September and November elections. Those being bigger elections, there may be other considerations. We continue the community mask distribution program. And just a note on that, we, MEMA was able to supply some masks for giveaways to Long Meadow Police Department. So we have them both available through the Police Department and the Council of Aging. We haven't had a ton of activity on that, not, not as much need as we thought, but we do have them available and we have plenty available. So please, if you're 60 years or older or have medical conditions, please reach out to either Council Aging or the Police Department for a mask. Again, I want to thank you, the residents, for their efforts to keep our community safe. And I'll answer any specific questions.
Thank you, Chief. Richard Foster, do you have any questions for the chief?
No, I don't, Marie. Thanks for the briefing, chief.
No problem.
Mark Gold.
Yeah, I have just one question. I've been tracking the cases over the last few weeks, chief. And you know, this, this week, you're saying it's gone up and down over the time. I know we're doing social tracking. Has there been any consistency or any threads that people should be aware of, of how people believe or we believe people are being exposed to the virus in Long Meadow?
You know, I, I think the mask guidance, all the scientific data I've read, Mr. Gold, you know, the mask should make a difference. You know, continue socially distancing when you, when you can. But I mean, we're seeing this, we're seeing better declines in a lot of the areas around us. I think our residents are more engaged in all of the protective practices, and I think they have been all along, so. So I think as a community, we're doing pretty good. Again, our, we, we've broken it down, our data sets, to look at every congregate housing separately, the nursing home separately, and actually our community spread. Our community spread never really took off. Even at the peak, we were still below the state average. The nursing at home numbers, when you look at that big number that's online, really skewed our numbers.
Thank you.
Tom Lakusha, do you have any questions for the chief?
Oh, I don't have any questions for the chief, but I do have a question for the person who's sort of facilitating the meeting. We keep getting interruptions from people on the phone who are making background noises. Is there any way that we can mute those folks? Because it's, it's really, I know for our viewers, it must be kind of distracting. I find it distracting just even to hear the chief's report. So I don't know if that's something we can take care of.
Lynn was knocked off the Zoom. I think she might be back. I'm not too sure. Lynn is the host, so she could be the only one to do that. But I encourage everyone to please mute if you are not speaking. And that includes the people that have called in and are our guests for tonight. So Tom, that's the only thing we can try to do till Lynn gets back on.
Okay, thank you, Marie.
And chief, I have a question. You know, when you see in the paper, it says how many cases Long Meadow has, it says 202. Is that just cases that we've had historically through the crisis? Where does that number come from? And I've seen other on social media, even higher numbers.
Yeah, so the data I give you comes right from Maven, which is the DPH database. And that, the total number you see there were the, there's a little difference between, because of the nursing home tracking. It's somewhere between 171 and 202. That's the total of all the cases. We look at both the total of the cases. We actually look at cases that are both open and closed. So when I report the five cases in the community, those are the current active cases.
A downward trend when you see?
Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, we've been in double digits pretty much through this. I think last Wednesday, we went down into the single digits. You know, bounce up and down day to day as new cases get added and we take, and new cases, and the old case is clear. So, but we're going definitely in the right direction. And congregate housing, most of those are clear now. We have one or two just hanging cases, and even the nursing home is reduced significantly. They've done a real good job of getting their arms around that, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
All right, are there any residents that have called in and wish to make a comment?
Yes, I, I'll go ahead.
Could you state your name and your address?
Sure, my name is Patrick Carnahan. I'm actually under the, my son's thing, it says Connor, but I'm actually Patrick. And I'm at 311 Farmington Road in Long Meadow. And if I could, I'd just like to share with you a few thoughts on the position of a tree warden for the town of Long Meadow. I should also note that I am on the Tree Committee and have been so for about five years. It recently came to my attention that the current tree warden, Dave Marinelli, would be not seeking reappointment as a tree warden for the town. Dave has devoted many hours to the care and oversight of the trees of Long Meadow. In his tenure, there are about 18 months as tree warden. The town has planted some 500 trees, 250 in just the last year with, and with Dave retiring, and this is going to leave a critical position, in my opinion, that's going to need replacement. But I think it's important to consider, it's not just going to be replacing the tree warden with just anybody. I think replacing the tree warden with a qualified, experienced, dedicated professional is essential. It's essential for the care and maintenance of our public shade trees, and it's also important, not just for the aesthetics of the town, but also for, for value, added value to the town. And this is something that people don't always consider, and I think it's important that we consider this when we're looking at a tree warden. Because study after study has shown that trees add value to, to real estate and to town valuation. A University of Michigan study concluded that trees on a well-kept yard increase property values 6% to 11%. Another study by the Management Information Service, ICMA, likewise concluded that with proper landscape and including mature trees, property values in some cases can go up as much as 20%. So trees add value. It's not just monetary value, but they also can be a lot of other values, such as carbon sequestration value, ecological value, stormwater runoff mitigation value, and in other words. Bottom line is, trees provide a lot of value. And I think Long Meadow benefits a lot by the tree canopy. We have the public shade trees, and I think it's a very important position, the tree warden. Dave's done a marvelous job, but I'm hoping that when we go forward and select the next tree warden, there are some things that we consider. I personally would like to see the next tree warden be a full-time position. I think it should be somebody who's also a certified mass arborist. A certified mass arborist is somebody who's been trained, who has the requisite skills and knowledge and ability to care for trees, to evaluate trees, hazardous mitigation issues, as well as pruning and, and you know, the selection of trees for the future. When we remove trees, we should always be planting trees. And, and I understand that right now, we're in significant financial stress in the town. And I know that this is not always a popular thing to say. I think we should hire a full-time position. But I think when you look at the value that trees provide, and when they come down, when we don't want them to come down, there's also the litigation issue. And a properly trained tree warden will mitigate litigation and add value. I think that the position actually pays for itself. And I would like you to consider not how can we afford this, but how can we not afford a full-time tree warden position? Currently, I think Dave was working, I think the position currently calls for 10 hours a week, and that's really not a lot for the many thousands of trees. So I really would like folks to consider that. That's, that's all I have. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other residents who wish to speak? We'll move right on to Select Board comments. Mark Gold, do you have any Select Board comments?
Yeah, I just had two. I think that we're going to be mentioning them, or I hope they're going to be on the, the agenda next, at our next meeting, Marie, but I just wanted to make sure people were aware that issues that had come up recently regarding zoning by law enforcement is something that's of interest and we will be addressing at our next meeting.
Thank you. Richard Foster, do you have any Select Board comments? Tom Lakusha?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move right on to interviews for boards and committees. I understood, Tim McKenna, you're, you're on board here? I thought he called in, Tim. Are you, do you have to unmute? Okay, Susan Shepherd? I saw that you came in. Did we lose you?
I'm here, I'm here.
You want to state your name, your address, and what position that you are asking to be appointed?
Yes, it's Susan Shepherd. I live at 58 Emerson Road, and it's for the Committee on Recycling.
And is this a new appointment or reappointment?
This is a new appointment.
And you want to tell us what you're hoping to do by coming on recycling?
It's an area that I've had an interest in in a long time, and I'm on a green committee meeting, I mean, a green committee at Sinai Temple, and we've been looking more into recycling issues. And last year, I was involved with solar. I have solar panels that I've gotten now in my house through the Long Meadow program. And so it's just a whole issue with climate, and I wanted to be more involved on the local level.
Okay, well, thank you for volunteering. Mark Gold, do you have any questions for Susan?
No, I don't, Susan. Thank you for volunteering.
Richard Foster, any questions?
Richard's having some issue with audio. There's quite a few people in the Zoom that don't have names associated with them, so it's really hard for me to tell who needs to be unmuted if they're unable to unmute themselves.
454, you see a 454?
Is that it?
Yeah, well, no, not yet. Tom Lakusha, do you have any questions for Susan?
Yeah, Susan, is there any specific area of recycling that you're more interested in?
I've been finding out gradually more about it. I think just looking at, you know, specifics and what happens to the recycling items in, in this town. I know it's changing in July. I worked a little bit on that committee at Sinai with Erwin Purce. I know he's been real involved. And I really don't know what the committee does too much or what's needed, but I am looking to learn more.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and I want to thank you for volunteering, and it's nice that you'll be able to coordinate information between Mount Sinai's program and our program, so that's wonderful. What we'll do is, we vote at the next meeting, so we'll, we'll let you know about your appointment. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and have a good meeting.
Is Tim McKenna here? Turtle Lot? Anyone else to be interviewed? Okay, we'll swing around since we seem to be having some trouble with that. And Lynn, are you able to do the town manager's report? Because I know Lynn was having trouble there.
Yeah, Lynn's having problems with Zoom.
Okay, so we'll, we'll move on to the next thing, which I really need Lynn here for the police chief appointment. So unfortunately, we're going to have to move that down. Let's go to the next item, which is, I'm looking for a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes for May 18th, 2020.
Make a motion that we approve the Select Board minutes of the May 18th, 2020, regular meeting.
Richard Foster, seconds.
We got your back, Richard.
She, she took me off mute.
Good. Any discussions? Okay.
May I interject?
Yes.
Under new business, where it has a sale of bonds, you're saying that the town refinanced the loan at 1.69 for savings of 172,000. That's 172,000 annually for 13 years.
So that would be the amendment you'd want to?
Right, which equates to 2.24 million dollars overall.
Okay.
You lost a lot of meaning there.
Yeah, do you want to amend that?
I'll accept that amendment to my motion.
And Richard, will you second that amendment?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Debbie? Okay, I guess I'll do the roll call vote. Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard Foster?
Yes.
Tom Lakusha?
Yes.
And I say yes also. So we'll keep notes to give it in case Debbie's, we've lost Debbie completely. All right, so now we're looking at the, a, a special meeting minutes for May 21st, 2020. Is there a motion to approve those?
I'll move that we approve the special Select Board meeting of May 21st, 2020, with respect to the approval of the sale of the bonds.
Second, second by Richard Foster.
Any discussion or amendments? Okay, roll call vote? Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard Foster?
Yes.
Tom Lakusha?
Abstain, I was a little late.
Okay, and I say yes.
I noticed that Jim Turtleot may be here under his wife's computer, Elaine Turtleot. So if we could get that unmuted, we could take care of interviewing him.
Mr. Turtleot, can you get unmuted? That would be up to Lynn, and we're having trouble with Lynn. Okay, so if anyone does get unmuted, just speak up, and I'll, I'll, I'll swing around and finish those interviews for you.
Somehow I became the host, so I took over and unmuted him. This is Dave Marinelli.
All right, so now we have Jim, thank you.
Okay.
Need a salary increase, though, if I'm going to be Lynn.
So would you like to state your name, your address, and the position that you're hoping to be appointed?
My name is James Turtleot, 64 Prinwood Road, and I hope to be appointed to the zoning board of appeals.
Okay. And is this a reappointment or a new position?
New position.
All right, would you, Mark Gold, do you have any questions?
Can we give him, Mr. Turtleot, a chance to see if he has any comments first?
Okay, would you like to state why you would like to be on the zoning board of appeals?
Sure. Actually, I became interested in it as a result of being involved with the Long Meadow Pipeline Awareness Group and the zone changes that flowed from that group's attention to climate change and the problem with Columbia Gas. In doing that, I did a lot of research in the zone bylaw. And in the zone bylaw, there's quite a lot about the zoning board of appeals. And it brought back a lot of pleasant memories of the time when I was the chair of the planning board in Springfield and subsequently the zoning board of appeals, and an old interest in land use. And since I haven't done a great deal of civic duty in the town, and I've now lived here for quite a long time, I thought it might be time to do something worthwhile. So that essentially is why I've applied.
And are you applying for the three-year associate term expiring 6/2023 or the five-year term expiring 6/2025?
If the five-year is the regular appointment, as opposed to the associate appointment, I'd, I'd be more interested in the five, but if that's not available, the three associate is fine.
Okay. Mark Gold, do you have any questions?
Do, Mr. Turtleot, thanks very much for applying. I guess my question has to do with your, your comments, which is one of the reasons I wanted to see if you had any comments. And that is to understand the, the ZBA is, is more than just a one-issue committee, and wondering how your thoughts were about, you know, neighbors putting up fences or putting additions within 15 feet on non-conforming lots, and all the things that really take up the, the ZBA's time and, and effort, and if you're prepared to, to address those issues as well.
Yeah, those, certainly there. I remember dealing with all those problems quite well in the days of Springfield. And coincidentally, my neighbor across the street, Katons, are before the ZBA as we speak. With permission for a few chickens in their backyard, of which I approve. So I'm not sure where that puts me. I guess I have the chicken over there. But no, I, the small items that are custom, customarily dealt with by the ZBA are always, well, to me at least, they're interesting. And I would not look at them as something that was just a thing in the mouth.
Thank you.
Richard Foster, any questions?
No, no, thank you, Marie.
Tom Lakusha? Tom Lakusha?
Well, you know, I know the circumstances that may bring you into this position have to do with the pipeline. But I'm really glad that we have this opportunity to have you on a board in town. You know, your experience as a lawyer is going to be of great benefit to the town. And as you know, with the pipeline, the town has spent a fair amount of money. And we haven't gotten much results. So it'd be nice to have someone like yourself on the planning board, yeah, on the zoning board. And so I'm glad you're going to be helping out the town. I appreciate your willingness to volunteer.
Okay, thank you very much for interviewing. We'll be voting at our next select board on the appointments.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. And is Tim McKenna available? Okay, well, we'll swing back again. The shared health services, we sort of need Lynn on that also. So I'm going to move down to the appointment.
Lynn's back on the call, Marie.
Lynn's back? I'm sorry, I'm having terrible connection issues tonight. I keep getting kicked out.
Okay, do you want to go straight down to the police chief appointment and shared health services before we lose you? We'll do the Town Managers' Report later.
That'd be great. That'd be great. Thank you.
And we'll go to the first item under old business, which is the police chief appointment. Oh, did we just lose?
No, she's, it froze, but hopefully she'll be back.
Here she is, okay.
Okay. So what's attached in your packet is a memo. I'll read that memo and then we can have a conversation. So tonight I am presenting Robert Stocks' appointment to the position of police chief, filling the vacancy created by the retirement of Chief John Stankowitz. Mr. Stocks has been a police officer with the town of Long Meadow for 23 years and is currently a lieutenant with the Long Meadow Police Department. Mr. Stocks joined the police department in 1997 and has served as a patrol officer and a sergeant before assuming his current role as lieutenant. Lieutenant Stocks holds a master's degree in criminal justice from Westfield State College, a bachelor's degree in sociology from Springfield College, a certificate of advanced graduate study in forensic psychology from Springfield College, and is a graduate of the FBI National Academy in Quantico, Virginia. Lieutenant Stocks has the experience, intellect, skills, and integrity to lead the Long Meadow Police Department. I am pleased and honored to submit his appointment as our next police chief to the select board for confirmation in accordance with the Long Meadow Charter, Article 5-2P.
Thank you, and thank you for your years of service, Lieutenant Stocks. Your resume is quite impressive. Is there anything you wanted to say before I opened it up to the select board asking you questions?
Actually, I do. I just want to thank you guys for having me. And I really want to say the men and women of the LPD are truly some of the greatest individuals in law enforcement. So to be selected as their police chief is both an honor and a privilege. So I've worked my entire career to be here. I certainly appreciate it. And I will continue to work and provide the professionalism that you guys have come to expect.
Thank you. And it's very exciting to have someone who knows Long Meadow so well stepping into this position. Mark Gold, do you have any questions or comments for Lieutenant Stocks?
I actually have two questions. And as Lieutenant Stocks will let you know, I actually emailed them to him earlier in the earlier in the week so that they weren't shocked. But the first question is, it goes like this. Given the incidents going on around the country this past week, what is the leadership of the police department in Long Meadow doing to ensure that officers understand that their obligation to the public and the law supersede their loyalty to fellow officers? And how can you communicate that assurance to our residents? The background for this question is my concern beyond the actions of one police officer that there were three other officers who were standing around, one literally with his hands in his pockets. One of these three must have thought enough is enough, but none of them took action, apparently deferring to the arresting officer. What will you be doing as police chief to assure our community that our officers would step in if a situation like this were ever to arise locally?
That's a great question, Mr. Gold. I appreciate it, especially in this climate. What I would want to articulate to the community is the Long Meadow Police Department has consistently had a tradition of providing the best level of service of law enforcement in the area. In addition to maintaining state certification, which entails every officer must complete at least a minimum of 40 hours of training per annum, which means every year we have to take at least 40 hours of training, which includes use-of-force training. The use-of-force training is both lecture-based, it's hands-on, practical, and as well as incorporates de-escalation training, crisis intervention training, and administering medical aid if and when necessary. So in addition to doing that, our officers are fully trained and up to speed with the state mandate. But as you may be aware, the Long Meadow Police Department is an accredited police agency. We were the first police agency in Hammond County to become accredited. And what that means is we are held to a higher standard. The state has provided an accreditation status to our department. And that means they evaluated our protocols, our policies, our practices, and these ensure that we are providing the safest and most up-to-date protocols to our community. So I'm not too concerned with how our officers are going to handle use-of-force incidents on the street. The accreditation process mandates that we do an annual audit of every incident which involves use-of-force, which means every use-of-force incident, an officer must complete a report. The report is then reviewed by the ship supervisor, and then it gets kicked up to the captain, who then reviews it. And then at the completion of every year, we do an audit of ourselves to ensure that all the reports that were done are done completely and correctly. And if any deficiencies are identified, we then take steps to correct that. So we're staying ahead of the curve there. And to kind of get back to the second part of your question, Mr. Gold, is, and again, most alarming is, why didn't the other officer do something when that bad officer did that atrocious act? I think that's a question on everyone's mind. Our policy for the Long Meadow Police Department has a stipulation in which officers have an obligation to intercede. So we have actually put in writing that in an instance, when an officer, regardless of rank, gets themselves involved in a situation in which they are violating someone's constitutional rights, they're using excessive force, that officer has a duty to intercede and stop the action. This has been a longstanding issue. Unfortunately, it takes incidents like the one recent to kind of bring it to light again. But I think in whole, we are all working to get our practices to be the best that we can. And I think the Long Meadow Police Department is way ahead of the curve again. And if I can just sum that up by saying, just personally, I just ask the community, just continue to support law enforcement. This is a difficult time for all of us. But I can tell you, don't let the bad action of one officer tarnish the badge that the rest of the men and women that wear that uniform so proudly and go out day to day and every night to serve proudly and professionalism with professionalism. Please don't let that one officer's action have tarnished the rest of us.
Thank you. Thank you. If I could ask just my second question also. And what should the role of the police department be in enforcing civil infractions like bylaw violations? Whether, and my two pet peeves are, you know, fire hydrants not being shoveled out after a snowstorm, or sidewalks left with snow on them, or even just cars parked in the streets overnight. Should the same latitude for enforcement be available to our sworn officers as they have for issuing a ticket versus a warning for traffic violation?
You know, in my 23-year tenure, Mr. Gold, I've seen our profession change drastically. You know, our officers are now trained to handle mental health issues. Our officers are carrying tasers to better better dress a violent person, take them into control in a safer manner. Our officers have a dash cam on the cruiser to videotape their actions. We have Narcan now to, that we can apply to people and provide people that are in an opioid overdose. So our responsibilities and roles have changed drastically, and it's become more complex. But one thing about the Long Meadow Police Department, and I can assure you, is that we've never lost sight of the core values of Long Meadow. And those things you cited are exactly why Long Meadow is the great town that it is. We have these bylaws that make Long Meadow such a great place to live. So my officers are still out there on midnights, believe it or not. They're checking for streetlights that are out. My officers are out there looking for the cars that are parked in the streets. We are a little bit heavier on enforcement in the winter months. Obviously, we want to keep the roadways clear for snow removal. But we also do the hydrants, getting those shoveled out. Some people tend to shovel them out from the sidewalk to the hydrant. They don't realize the firefighters need to get from the road to the hydrant. But, you know, I'm a big fan of enforcement through education. So I hope I don't say the wrong thing when I say this, but I prefer my officers to go out and try to give the warnings at first. You know, I don't think it does anything to hit everybody with a fine right out of the gate. Some people are unaware. People may have just moved into town and may be unaware that they have to shovel their sidewalk within 24 hours of the cessation of snow. But by giving those, we have cards pre-printed, and we put those in the mailbox. If we get a complaint, if we find a sidewalk unshovelled, if we have a car parked on the roadway, the first offense, hey, it's an education. You know, we advise the people that we try to keep, you know, our streets clear of parked vehicles. In the unlikely event someone does tend to reoffend, then bylaw tickets are issued. But our officers are pretty good at trying to toe the line and keep everybody happy while at the same time enforcing our bylaws.
Thanks very much. Great answers. Appreciate it, and congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Richard Foster, do you have questions or comments?
No, I really don't. I'd like to congratulate Lieutenant for pending promotion to our chief of police in our wonderful community. And they say, I loved his answers. He gave very crisp, clean answers. They were well thought out. I don't know how much advance Mark Gold gave him, but they still were pretty good answers. And I agree with you. You had an excellent police force in town. And it's nice to be able to have individuals like yourself that have been here as many years as you have be able to step up and take the lead position.
Thank you, Mr. Foster.
Tom Lakusha?
Yes, congratulations, Lieutenant Stocks. I'd like to see someone with a sociology background step into law enforcement. I think I was at Springfield College teaching when you were a student there. I don't know if you ever took a course of me. Any chance?
I did. As a matter of fact, I most certainly did, sir. As a matter of fact, I was in Wiser Hall. I remember the class.
Was it social problems?
I believe it was. It was.
Well, good, good. I'm glad that we got to talk about some things at one point. And hopefully we'll get to talk about some things during your tenure year. Yeah, this situation that happened in Minnesota, you know, it's been very distressing for me only because, you know, I've taken, you know, use-of-force training, and they didn't do anything about how to really manage a person with handcuffs when they're on their feet. You know, I, as a former wrestling coach and wrestler myself, I mean, I can't imagine a high school wrestler who couldn't maneuver a person in handcuffs into a squad car, you know, without. And I don't see why they would have to, you know, you know, put that kind of pressure on them for eight minutes, you know. I just, I'm befuddled by it, you know, because that's some basic stuff. And so, you know, I hope that, you know, in the use-of-force training, if there's any additions that need to be included for working with people who, you know, perpetrators who are handcuffed, you know, who haven't been, they're citizens. They haven't been arrested yet. They haven't been proven to be guilty of anything yet. And so, you know, how do we handle citizens in a way that, you know, that officers are safe? But that, you know, we take into account that, you know, once they're handcuffed. I mean, you know, if we can't handle people in handcuffs, I think that, you know, we're in pretty rough shape as a society. But, you know, I know you'll be looking, you'll have a chance to review everything. And I know you'll do a thorough job and welcome aboard as chief.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
Hi. Well, thank you very much. Again, we appreciate your, all your years of service and everything you've done. So I'm very excited about your pending appointment here. Lynn, did we need a roll call vote?
Well, actually, we need a motion. I'd like to move that we approve the recommendation of the Town Manager to appoint Lieutenant Roberts to be the police chief of the town of Long Meadow.
I'll second that.
That's Tom. I second it. Any further discussion? All right, why don't we go ahead with the roll call vote? Debbie? No, I guess not. I know there's been a problem with the Zoom, so I'll go ahead and call the roll call.
I just unmuted her.
Marie? Hi, Debbie. Want to?
Oh, thank you, Lynn. Marie?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes. Congratulations, Chief Stocks.
Yes, congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
You're the first police chief to be awarded the job on Zoom in our town.
Thank you very much. And if I may, if I can just add, I just want to just express my appreciation of Lynn Simmons. In the crazy times, you know, her schedule was absolutely packed. And she did take her time, and she carved some time out of that schedule to make sure that the Long Meadow Police Department got a permanent chief in place. I think she saw the importance of that. I want to thank Captain Fontaine for kind of stepping in as the interim chief. But I know Lynn Simmons really went above and beyond in moving the process forward. So I really just want to tip my hat to you, Lynn. Thank you again. Thank to everyone for the votes. And for the record, my contract has already been negotiated. So this is not a last-ditch effort to negotiate compensation. That's already behind us. So thank you for everyone. I really appreciate it, and I'm really looking forward to working with everyone.
Thank you. Looking forward to it, too. But Lynn, do you want to move on to the shared health services?
Yeah, just quickly, I do want to thank Chief Stocks for throwing his hat in the ring. I think we're really lucky to have him. And a special thank you to Captain Fontaine for serving in the interim role. Especially during this challenging time, that was not easy. And thank you to the board for this process and for affirming the appointment tonight. We will be doing a very brief socially-distanced swearing-in ceremony tomorrow morning at 10:30 on the steps of the police station. The town clerk will swear Chief Stocks in. And we will be wearing masks and standing six feet apart if you did want to observe that.
Okay, that sounds wonderful. I'll try to make it. And we'll see you tomorrow morning.
You wanted me to move on to shared services?
Sure.
Okay, this actually may be on here. I can just give you a quick update on where we are. The intent had been last week to present the final version of the shared services agreement for a second time to the Board of Health. They wanted a little bit more time to review the final draft. And I provided them some answers to questions that they had. And we were supposed to meet Thursday night last week. But unfortunately, they had a quorum issue in that meeting.
And froze again. Lynn, if you can hear us, just take off your video so your sound, audio will come through.
Okay, well, there is going to be another meeting of the Board of Health. I believe that everyone got notice of that. It'll be on June 3, Wednesday. And hopefully on the 15th, we'll be able to bring that back and get the full discussion and a vote on the shared. You back? Oh, she's back.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, I'm sorry tonight. I don't know what's going on with the connection. We've also had a couple attempts of people trying to enter the meeting tonight. So I don't know if that has something to do with it that are not, clearly not supposed to be here. So I'm sorry. So I was supposed to bring the shared services agreement to you tonight, but the Board of Health could not meet last Thursday night due to a quorum issue. I'm scheduled to meet with them Wednesday night. And then I hope to bring this shared service agreement back to your meeting on June 15 for review and hopeful vote at that point.
Okay, sounds great. Do you want to move right on to Town Managers' Report?
Sure. So just my standard update, the coronavirus COVID-19 website has any update that we've been putting out, any recent ones. The town departments have been reviewing the guidance for Um, the town departments have been reviewing the guidance for reopening and beginning to develop plans to reopen departments, buildings and programs using the frameworks applied by the governor's reopening advisory board. Lynn tennis courts have reopened and signage was placed notifying users of the, of the courts that they need to follow safety guidelines while using them. The clay tennis courts at Bliss Parker will remain closed while maintenance is performed. Uh, in order to complete spring and summer related maintenance work, two DPW staff were...
Uh, we lost Lynn again. All right, we'll, we'll swing back to that and people can ask questions. I know she was just about finishing up the report there. Uh, so why don't we move down before we do the appointments? I just want to see, did Mr. McKenna get unmuted? I know I received an email saying he is been, he's been on. He's not been able to get unmuted. And, um, I think this has to do with someone, so many people trying to get into the meeting inappropriately. And Lynn, as the host, has been also been kicked off. We've been very unstable tonight. So, Mr. McKenna, we'll just keep checking with you and, uh, see if you can get on. So I'm going to move to the appointments and...
Marie, maybe, maybe, Marie, if Mr. McKenna could, could just identify himself through a chat directly to Lynn, then she'll know who to unmute or maybe to you and Lynn.
Yeah, can, can you hear me now? Is my connection okay now? Um, what if, I just don't know what his telephone number is. Otherwise I, I can't unmute him, so I could try to...
Right, that's why I said if he could through a chat directly to you, just put down how he's identified, so you'll unmute him.
Yeah, he might, let me see if he's this one here. Is that you, Mr. McKenna?
No, this is Mary Guff Bergeron.
Sorry.
I'll send him an email. Um, Lynn, do you want to finish your report?
Uh, sure. I'll try to be quick. I, I'm sorry about tonight. I don't know what's happening. Um, so, uh, stores, library staff are working on reopening plans, which will include contact lists, um, curbside pickup and, 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 uh, no changes for additional for those staff have been, have been done yet.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, you got a bit of a reverberation going on, Lynn. Uh, we're going to go on to the appointments. What I'm going to do is I'm going to look for a motion for all reappointments, uh, not for the new. So I'm going to read and the names and the appointments and then I'll look for a motion. I'm looking for a motion to appoint, reappoint Peter Nassar, uh, for the, uh, three-year term expiring six, um, I'm sorry, for the three-year term expiring six, 2023. Also looking for a motion to reappoint Matthew Schron for, um, audit committee for the three-year term expiring, and the building committee to Tom Ewen for a three-year term expiring six, 2023. For a reappointment to the building committee to Jim Moulton for the three-year term expiring six, 2023. For a reappointment to the building demolition committee for Michelle Steiger for a three-year term expiring six, 2023. Or a reappointment to the cable advisory committee for Paul Gorman for a three-year term expiring six, 2023. Or the cable advisory committee, uh, Norman Michaels for three-year term expiring six, 2023. For a three-year appointment for Steve Woolman, uh, expiring six, 2023. For capital planning committee, a reappointment for Steve Even Metz for a three-year term expiring six, 2023. Or a reappointment for John Skyback for a three-year term expiring six, 2023. For community preservation committee, a reappointment for Linda Glenn for a three-year appointment expiring six, 2023. For a reappointment of Bill Harbison for a three-year term expiring six, 2023. For the conservation commission, a reappointment for Andrea Chason for, um, a three-year, uh, term expiring six, 2023. A reappointment of David Dumas for a reappointment for a three-year term expiring six, 2023. For Kieran McCully, associate, uh, reappointment for a one-year associate term expiring six, 2021. For the, uh, council of aging board of directors, a reappointment of Rose Marais for a three-year term expiring six, 2023. For Marjorie Morgan for a three-year term expiring six, 2023. For a reappointment of Julia Moulton for a three-year term expiring six, 2023. For George Shea for a three-year term expiring six, 2023. For a three-year term expiring six, 2023 for Teresa Yessu. For cultural council, a reappointment of Margaret Landon for a three-year term expiring six, 2023. For a reappointment of Peter Thompson for a three-year term expiring six, 2023. For energy and sustainability committee, reappointment of Liz Bone for a three-year term expiring six, 2023. For a reappointment of Andrea Chason, three-year term expiring six, 2023. For a reappointment of, uh, in the historic district commission for Jonathan Jordan incumbent for a three-year term expiring six, 2023. Historic commission, Tim Casey, for a three-year term expiring six, 2023. Parks and Recreation Commission, reappointment of Jeffrey Rintool for a three-year term expiring six, 2023. Or Recycle Commission, reappointment of Liz Bone incumbent for a three-year term expiring six, 2023. Or reappointment of Erwin Pierce, three-year term expiring six, 2023. Or a tree committee, Mark Talowski incumbent, three-year term expiring six, 2023. Is there a motion for those re...
So moved. Mark Gold.
Richard Foster, second.
Discussion. All right.
Did you get the zoning board, did you get the zoning board of appeals?
I did not, since we just had a new person and there's a question of the three-year term and the five-year term. I felt that had to be moved to, uh, discussion because we have, um, we just interviewed Mr. Turlet.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, Debbie?
Marie?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
All right, there is two new appointments I wanted to bring and then I was going to hand this over to Richard. Uh, there's a new appointment, Andrea Hope here for the historic district commission. She was a new interview for, um, a, a three-year term, um, expiring six, 2023. Is there a motion to appoint Andrea to this new position?
So moved.
So moved. Second, Richard Foster.
So Mark Gold, uh, moved it and second, Sir Richard Foster. Any, uh, discussion? Okay, roll call vote, Debbie?
Marie?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, there is another new, um, appointment for the building demolition committee, Michael Doyle. I'm looking for a motion to appoint him for the three-year term expiring six, 2022.
So moved. Mark Gold.
Is there a second?
Second, second, Richard Foster.
All right, um, discussion? Okay, roll call vote?
Marie?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm now going to hand the gavel over to Richard Foster. He's going to work on the Board of Health appointments. And the others, which is the ones we interviewed for tonight, as well as the zoning board of appeals will be on the 15th. So Richard, uh, is taking over the chair. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Marie. We have, we have a unique opportunity this year that we have, uh, more doctors putting in for the Board of Health than we have active positions. Uh, Marie did some research and found out that we cannot add to the committee until it's actually placed on a warrant article, which we, the earliest we can do will be the, this coming fall. So at this point, we have two individuals, uh, Taz Angelides and Jonathan Chason, uh, that both would like to be on the, uh, Board of Health and we have the duty to place one of them on tonight. I figure the easiest way to do it is we'll just go a roll call and you just speak out who you'd like to, uh, put on. I'm not quite sure what happened there, Lynn. Do you know? Nope, she doesn't. Okay, so if anybody can hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, good. So why don't we, I'm just going to go ahead and do a roll call and we'll just name the person that we want to be placed in the primary slot. And then with, with, with the caveat, I'd say that we'll put a warrant article up for this fall to, uh, to consideration of increasing the size of this committee, especially if we have, uh, a wonderful cadre of doctors that would like to serve on this committee.
Richard, did we approve, did we approve, this is Mark, did we approve Dr. Rappaport and Mary, Mary Pat Toy as to, for reappointment?
Yeah, she, she did that once she went, once she went down, Mark.
Okay. All right.
Debbie, you want to do a roll call?
Um, yeah, I don't, I don't see that I had, um, Mary Pat and Dr. Rappaport.
Yeah, they weren't, I didn't think that they were included the first time through.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mark. I thought she did read them. Okay, well, then let's drop back then. I'd like a motion placed to, uh, to reincorporate two of the incumbents back onto the committee. Uh, one is Robert Rappaport and the other is, uh, Mary Pat Toy.
Okay, so I'll, yeah, if that's a motion, I'll second that motion.
No, that was asked for a motion, Tom.
Okay, so I, I so moved. I'll move, yeah, let's reappoint those.
Now, is there a second?
Uh, I'm, since I'm here, I'll second it, but for the purposes of, of making the second, I, you know, and the reason I asked that is because literally we have four people applying for three spots. That doesn't mean we have to reappoint existing members of the, of the health, Board of Health. I mean, we could pick any three we wanted to in any way we want to. That was my process, Richard. But the motion is to reappoint Dr. Rappaport and Mary Pat Toy to the three-year terms expiring June 2023. Is that it, Tom?
Yes.
Well, Mark, Mark, would you like to open this issue up for discussion? I didn't, I didn't think there would be any desire to open it up for discussion.
Well, I, I'm, just we have new people interested in coming on and new people, you know, and we have a lot of, you know, new interest and people have been on the board for a very long time. That was my only point. I, you know, I, you know, Dr. Rappaport's been the chair of the board and I think we're in the middle of a, a health crisis. We're in the middle of merging with, potentially merging with East Long Meadow. And I think, you know, we ought to probably keep, keep our chair on the, on, on the committee. So that's my personal opinion. And, you know, I, I just don't know how to go about it. I just wanted to point out the fact that there, there's no such thing as lifetime appointments here and everybody's up for, for reappointment and we ought to consider that, I guess.
Do you, do you, do you have an alternate method? Do you have an alternate method that you'd like to propose for tonight?
Uh, no, I don't, Richard. So, I, I, I mean, you know, there's a motion on the table, so we'll vote on the motion and move forward.
Vote forward. Okay, Debbie, roll call?
Uh, Marie is not part of this or?
No.
No, she's not part of it.
Okay, Richard?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Okay, and the second part of the equation is what we started out with before is we have two individuals that would like to fill the third open seat, uh, which it looks like it's a one-year associate term expiring six, uh, 2021. And we can only place one member on this position at this point. But as I said before, I would imagine that the board will be in the process of considering a bylaw or not a bylaw, a warrant article for the fall meeting so we can expand the size of this committee to, to be able to allow all the doctors that we wish to choose on it to be on it. Uh, so at this point, we have two people. We have Taz Angelides and, um, and Jonathan Chason that, that would desire entry on. I was proposing that we just go roll call vote and we just state who we'd like to be placed on the committee unless any other member has a, a different way.
I, I was just going to make a motion, but do whatever you want to do.
Make a motion.
Okay, I'll move that we, we appoint Jonathan Chason to the one-year associate term expiring June 2021.
Is there a second? So, okay, seeing no second, let's revert back to where we're originally going to do it. Uh, Debbie, do, do a roll call vote and what we'll be doing is each, each member on the board will tell, uh, who they would like appointed.
Okay, Richard Foster?
Taz Angelides.
Mark Gold?
Jonathan Chason.
Tom McKeese?
Yeah, Taz Angelides. So we...
It looks like it's three, it looks like it's three, two of the members being able to vote tonight. So it looks like Taz will put, will be put into the one-year associate term expiring six, 2021. Uh, at this point, I'll take control and give back to chair, back to Marie Angelides.
If she's there. Uh, well, why?
She better be.
We're waiting for Marie. I would just like to say that, um, you know, my reason I supported, uh, Taz Angelides is because he, you know, he's been fairly active in the town. Um, he's a person I've, I've met, you know, several times and, and, um, you know, he's very active and I, I'd like to see him, uh, in this new role, especially now that he's retired and he has extra time. Uh, I hope we can make adjustments for Dr. Chason to be in in the future. Uh, I would be in full support of that. All right, Marie, I think you're, well, it's back into your hands.
Okay. All right, well, we have, um, some people that are waiting to present, so I'd like to sort of move down, um, and jump down to item eight, which is the annual town meeting.
Marie, can we get to, to Tim McKenna? He's online.
Oh, he did come back. Tim?
He's been all along. It's, we're just waiting to unmute him.
Well, let me see if I got an email back to him. Uh, Tim's number. Okay, I just got Tim's number. It's six, one, seven, Lynn, three, two, zero, seven, two, six, two. Lynn or Dave Maradale? I'm not, I'm not the host here to be able to unmute poor Tim. Well, let's see, there's a chat here. Oh, Tim's home number is five, six, seven, thirteen, forty-nine?
Yeah, I don't see that on our list.
One, seven, three, two, zero, seven, two, six, two.
Yeah, I don't see anybody go to Tim's numbers.
No, he might have, he might have bowed out, got tired of waiting. So, uh, Lynn, just keep looking for those numbers to pop back up again, okay? And, um, we'll move on to, uh, the annual town meeting. Rebecca, can you hear us?
Yes.
Oh, great. Okay, you want to talk to us a little about, um, the town meeting update?
Sure, um, first, you know, I, I, I do want to say that I appreciated and offer my congratulations to Chief Stocks on his appointment tonight. Um, congratulations to you. And, uh, I really did appreciate your, your answers to the questions Mr. Gold had asked. Um, one of the things that we had done in our planning for town meeting as part of the Massachusetts Moderators Association was to create a planning guide that covered, you know, all aspects of, of planning. And one of the items was on trauma. And our, our community, like communities across the Commonwealth and across the world, have undergone a, a great deal of, of challenging times. And, um, then with the, the latest protests and, and difficulties that our communities are facing throughout the U.S., um, your attention to these matters is really important. So I, I do appreciate that. And as I said, you know, we're trying to make sure that this meeting is a safe meeting. It's a legitimate meeting. The governor's orders for a ban on public gathering exempts town meeting. And so it, it is permitted to have a meeting. We have been searching for guidelines, uh, from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, but no help has been forthcoming. So we're trying our best to do this on our own and I am terribly fortunate to have, uh, Chief Dearborn, who has stewarded a, a lot of this, this process through. And the, um, the town has created a, or he, he created the public gathering, the health and safety plan for our town meeting. Um, but I want to preface this. We're going to be sharing this plan with the Board of Health. Uh, they were able to fit us into their agenda on, uh, June third, so we'll be talking with them. Initially, they were not able to, and so I created a new meeting on June second. I may keep that meeting. I'm gonna be talking with Lynn and, and John about this to determine whether a, a kind of a public office hours would be appropriate if the, any members of the public have questions about the public health and safety aspects for town meeting. Um, so I will, I will provide that update on the, the town's website, uh, if that, there is a change. Um, the plan that we have for our meeting are currently scheduled on the, the twenty-third. And as long as our numbers continue to trend downward, we will have the meeting on the twenty-third, I presume, if the Board of Health and our, our Health Director are in agreement that the numbers are scaling downward and that it is safe to hold a meeting and that the mitigation strategies that we have prepared for are sufficient. And those mitigation strategies are really comprehensive. Uh, we take a look at everything from arrival at the meeting to after people leave. And I'm not going to go into every single detail in, in this overview, but I'll share the, the broad outlines. Um, we had considered a number of different locations and, and, um, recommend now as our final recommendation, the practice field in between the high school and the stadium. So it's directly behind the high school. There's a closer access to the building itself than either of the two other locations, the parking lot or the football stadium. So it offers, um, the benefits of having the electrical outlet access, uh, the access to the restrooms, uh, the proximity to sufficient parking. And it's a, a level, uh, field. It's, uh, it's a cooler location than the parking lot. And people will be distanced at least six feet, if not more, in separate aisles. Uh, we'll, we have a, a seating arrangement that allows for people to sit together if they're from the same household. As people arrive, they'll be, um, wearing, they'll, if they, if they're not already wearing masks, they'll be offered a mask. Uh, and, and masks will be required unless there is a medical reason for somebody not needing a mask. And we will proceed in a very orderly fashion to the seats. The seats will fill up row by row. Uh, so it's less spontaneous than people normally are and, you know, oh, I wanna sit here, oh, I wanna sit here. Now you'll, you'll, you'll be strongly encouraged to move in an orderly fashion, uh, to, to the rows. And once each row fills, then the subsequent rows, um, can be filled. We will have our meeting, um, as we have discussed with, uh, motions like consent agenda. Uh, there may be some other motions to, um, move to refer to an item to the planning board or move to, um, indefinitely postpone, but I would strongly encourage the board that if they are going to move to indefinitely postpone or move to recommend to the planning board, that if it's any of those citizen warrants that they are, um, definitely put back on the fall warrant. So we have these mitigation strategies in place, uh, to protect people's health and safety. We're keeping track of the, the rates, uh, of cases in the town. And we're obviously looking for guidance from the state if it's ever available. However, I am confident that we have a good plan to move forward, presuming that the numbers stay low or go down. Uh, and with that, I, I open it to, to questions. Um, oh, one more thing. I just really do appreciate the work that, that John Dearborn has done on this and that Lynn Simmons has done on this. It's been really tremendous. So, good.
Rebecca, I want to say thank you. You started, you started up in.
I can't hear you.
You can't hear me? Um, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, you started working on this all the way back in March, so you were very proactive, pulled your team together, uh, and so I appreciate all the hard work, cause you've been doing this for months now. So, thank you very much. And it's, it's been a moving target and you've stayed out right on top of it and brought in resources from outside this town, which has been phenomenal. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mark Gold, do you have questions for the town?
Yeah, I guess, my, yes, I do. Thank you, Marie. My, my question has to do with voter check-in. This is the first time I can recall town meeting that has two distinct voter check-in locations, one presumably not talking to the other. So, you know, how do we know people have not, you know, we're, we're worried about all kinds of things like who's coming and who's already been there? Somebody checking in on one desk versus another? Somebody who may have already checked in on that desk. I mean, you know, this is two, two simultaneous issues as opposed to precincts A, B, and C in one desk and D and E in the, in the other desk, if you follow what I'm asking, Rebecca. I'm concerned, concerned very frankly about somebody coming in and saying, I'm Rebecca Townsend on one side and somebody else coming around the other side saying, I'm Rebecca Townsend and Rebecca Townsend in there twice voting.
Well, I'd love to clone myself. I'd get a lot more work done, but I, I, I certainly wouldn't want that for the voting and, uh, obviously nobody would. We, uh, use, and thanks to, uh, Town Clerk Kathy Ingram, we now use these poll pads that are the electronic databases for uh, checking people in. So there's no more A, B, C, D. You can go up to any check-in desk. And it, once you are checked in, the database identifies you as being checked in, so you can't be checked in twice. So there's no, there's no two sets of paper books. There's one online, one electronic database.
Thank you.
Sure. Uh, Richard Foster, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a comment. Mark, that means there cannot be two Mark Golds there. Okay, now, I, I, I echo Marie, what you said, uh, you know, thank everybody for all the hard work just being put into this because it's unprecedented on what we're going into and, uh, I can, I can appreciate the futuristic planning when you don't know what the outcome is going to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Lakusha?
Yeah, Rebecca, again, thanks again and your committee for the work you've done. It looks like a great plan. Uh, and it's, it's funny, uh, that field wasn't one of the first alternatives, but yet it seems like a really good one. Um, so I'm excited about that. And I also am optimistic that by the time we have our town meeting, that folks will be used to going to events, you know, like churches and so forth, where they're in a large group and they're are uh, systematically sort of dismissed. You know, they don't just all leave at the same time. And I think that will help us, you know, but, um, yeah, I'm excited about the potential. I, I hope we get nice weather.
Me too.
Okay, anything you wanted to add, Lynn or Chief Dearborn? Okay, thank you very much. I'm sure we'll have more questions for you the next meeting, too.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You're, let us know if you're not going to have. So you might have a meeting tomorrow night with the Board of Health.
Yeah, uh, probably not with the Board of Health. I, I don't know that anybody would be available. Um, but it, it may be a public office hours so that anyone can zoom in. Um, but I, I will wanna check with, uh, Lynn and John separately on that to, to confirm whether that's a go or no. Um, I'll let you know.
You might wanna stay for the next item. I'm gonna push up. We're setting, uh, the fall town meeting date. We have reserved numerous dates and we have to start narrowing it down, cause the school doesn't want us to reserve six states. So Paul, do you wanna talk a little bit about that?
Sure. We had talked about it earlier meeting in September. I've spoken to Paul Dunkerly, the vice principal over at the high school. Um, currently, um, September fifteenth and the twenty-ninth are available for a September meeting. And then, um, as I had mentioned at the last meeting, I would not have all the financial information available if we should have another town meeting. Um, or just one town meeting. The other dates that I reserved are Tuesday, November eleventh and Tuesday, October twenty-seventh. Um, that would kinda work for us with the financial aspect. So I didn't know, um, what the board's feelings were, but those are reserved at this point in time. Um, minimally, if we could identify a September, a one September date and one later date, that would help them, uh, relieve some of the pressure that they have for reservations at the high school.
Okay, so, um, the board can actually set the date now. They can have, reserve a couple of dates as Paul suggested, which could be all November, um, of both October dates, or they could have a September and October date and make the decision later. So I'm just going to run through the board and see how people have opinions before we, we go to a motion. Uh, Mark Gold, uh, do you have any preferences?
Yeah, my preference is to pick one date, October twenty-seventh, that Paul will have the financials will, you know, nothing's saying it's gonna be any easier than it is now. It's a little earlier than November eleventh, so maybe the weather's gonna be a bit better, but it's late enough so that we don't have to have a, a, a separate, uh, a, a separate meeting. So I, I'd say October twenty-seventh would be my preference.
Okay, uh, Richard Foster?
I also go for October twenty-seventh.
Um, Tom Lakusha?
Yeah, I would be open for September, uh, twenty-ninth or October twenty-seventh. You know, if we have, uh, some options, we, we usually get everything done in time, so.
Uh, so, anyone wanna put a motion forward then to reserve both dates or just to reserve the twenty-seventh of October? Mark, you're raising your hand, but you're on mute.
No, no. Just Paul, Paul, you, would the, would the financials be ready on the September twenty-ninth? I thought you indicated probably not until the.
Right, it, it, uh, the, the, the main thing that we would probably be missing at that point in time is our new growth number. Um, free cash would more than likely be certified, but that new growth number could vary. We would have an idea, but there would still be a pretty wide variance. That would, that's the number that I'd be most worried about.
Well, more importantly, though, in order to put together a, an agenda for, or a warrant for the twenty-ninth of September, we'd have to bring everything in place a couple of weeks in advance. That's, I'm gonna make a motion for October twenty-seventh just to give us the time we need to get our, our ducks in order and get the, the, the financials finalized. I don't wanna have to go through this twice in the fall.
All right, so is there, that is a motion that Mark made? Is there a second to that motion?
Richard Foster will second.
Okay, and, um, do you, any further discussion on that? I do have a question for Rebecca. Um, are you still there?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and so if we, um, you do have alternative plans if we have to be indoors and we still are having a COVID issue?
That was my concern and question, um, for, for whether we're facing a, a second wave. And I, I don't know whether the, the chief anticipates this as well, Chief Dearborn. Um, but everything that I've been reading suggests that a second wave is likely. Um, if we do have the, the second wave, I, I mean, I'm, I'm reluctant to have it inside, given the way, uh, air, airflow in a building helps to transmit viruses. Um, but I, I'd wanna consult with, further with the Board of Health and, and with the chief on that.
Okay, uh, Chief Dearborn, do you have any comments?
Um, we've looked at a couple of different models and, you know, I, this thing, it's hard to predict the future, but uh, we could spread it out more in the high school using the auditorium, the cafeteria and, um, the gym. If we're somewhere in the middle ground, um, there's also, there's, uh, legislation, uh, pending that may give us some more options for town meetings. So I think it's a little too early, um, to arrive at how we're gonna do it, but I think we should be able to come up with something. Um, there, there will be some, some options. And, uh, you know, obviously I'll continue to, uh, talk to Rebecca on it and, um, you know, as we see the trends. I'm really hoping that we're done with this and there's no second, second wave, so. Um, that's my, I'm gonna, just gonna be optimistic.
Lynn, did you wanna add anything? Rebecca, did you wanna say something else?
The same with, with the chief.
Yeah.
Uh, so my concern about having a multiple-room meeting is that every motion would require close to a hand count. Every motion to call the question, every motion to amend, it would be a long meeting. And I wanna make sure that the board is aware of that. Um, if a meeting is indoors and we're split into three or more rooms, it's gonna be a very long meeting.
Um, anyone else wanna say anything else in regards to this? Okay, um, Debbie?
I agree. I was gonna just say, oh, I was just gonna say, it's, you know, I guess we have the motion, but, you know, we perhaps could make adjustments as things, as time goes by. You know, if we did a September fifteenth meeting, you know, we might be able to do that outside. It's still pretty nice in September, early September. And so I guess we should just keep that on a back burner if we need to.
All right, so the motion right now is to set the town meeting for the twenty-seventh. Uh, roll call vote?
Marie?
Actually, I'm gonna abstain since I won't be on the board.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you, uh, Rebecca for joining us and I have you down for the fifteenth, too. Will be, um, or, you know, just before our town meeting, uh, unless the, uh, we decide that we can push you off. But I think that's the last select board meeting before. We do have the twenty-second a warrant, but, uh, we'll touch base on the fifteenth and where we're going with it. All right, thank you very much.
Marie?
Yes?
Do you wanna mention the, the forums?
Yes, that we, uh, we have the two community forums. Uh, the eighth at seven o'clock and the twenty-second at seven o'clock. It'll be Zoom, so you can call in, watch, send your questions ahead of time if you don't wanna call in and we'll try to answer questions on the warrant. People should be receiving their warrants, uh, this week. And so you'll have a little time to go over and send in your questions or call in your questions. All right, thank you. I'd like to, uh, we do have, uh, also Mary Beth is on to talk about some PCOS. I don't like to keep our guests waiting. So I'd like to move down to the adult center PCO issues. Mary Beth? Oh, wait, before I do that, Mary Beth, you're the one who gave me Tim's phone number. I called Tim and, um, I'm going to call him now and interview him just before Mary Beth comes on. And I'm gonna do it the way we did it when we had everybody. And I call the phone number and then I would hold the phone up to my computer. Well, that's how we're gonna do Tim. One, three, four, nine. So let me know if you can hear him.
You reached the McKenna. Please leave a detailed message.
Oh, no. He told me to call. Okay, let me try his cell phone now. He said as soon as we finished with, um, Rebecca, we would call him. He told me he's having trouble with the cell phone.
Hi, Marie.
Hi, okay, um, could you, I'm gonna put you on the Zoom near the, my computer. State your name, your address and what position you're, this is a reappointment.
It is.
Where you are, what, what committee you're, you're asking for appointment from and why you wanna be on it.
Okay. All right. Uh, my name is Tim McKenna. I lived at, I live at one ninety-seven Farmington Road and I'm applying for a reappointment to the zoning board of appeals. Um, I've enjoyed my time on the, uh, board and, uh, I think it's a phenomenal, uh, group. And, um, I just, I like being part of it. I, I'm a registered architect and, uh, Dave, um, Lavenberg, the chair, asked me to, uh, sign back up that he, uh, he said that he really appreciates and needs, uh, my expertise on the board.
And he is recommended by the chair?
Yes.
Um, so I'm gonna ask, uh, roll call on who would have questions or comments for Tim. Uh, Mark Gold?
Questions, Tim, thanks for reapplying.
Sure, my pleasure.
Uh, Richard Foster?
Yeah, no questions.
Uh, Tom Lakusha?
No, it sounds like a good, good call. Thanks for, uh, reapplying.
Oh, my pleasure. I'm sorry for all the confusion.
Well, we're sorry. Uh, it's been a tough night, so thank you for your patience. And we'll be voting, um, at the next meeting on the fifteenth for reappointments. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thanks, Marie. Bye-bye.
Bye. Okay, Mary Beth? Are you there? Oh, no. Are we, Mary Beth? Uh, let me try to, her phone number in case.
Okay, I'm unmuted now, I think, Marie.
Oh, good, okay.
Okay, I don't know who unmuted me, but somebody unmuted me. Thank you. I think the host has to unmute the individual.
Yes, and so I was gonna give her your phone number. All right, well, uh, there's.
Okay.
Four PCOS. Do you want to just do a general introduction to them and then we're going to discuss one at a time?
Yeah, sir, I can just start with one at a time and go through the votes by the building committee. But before I start, I just wanted to also personally congratulate Chief Stokks on his appointment. I think that he will make a, a fine chief of police for our town for his longtime service. And also like to thank Chief Dearborn for his report and Rebecca for her hard work because clearly tonight we've had some very good reports from people who are interested in success in the town. I'm sorry?
No, just ignore that, keep going, Mary Beth.
Okay, okay. So the building committee met last Thursday and we reviewed our financial status as well as four PCOS that exceeded the limit of authority by the building committee and need to go in front of you for approval for the select board. And so each of these four, well, actually two of them only, we were, we recommend that the select board approve them. I'll start with PCO number 28, only because I usually do these in numerical order. And PCO number 28 has to do with the maple chair rail. Now, that's a little bit of a misnomer, that is actually wainscoting. When the design was first done, it was clear that wainscoting would be in all of the trafficked areas of the building. Then however, it went to the OPM and the architect to do some value engineering, to get the bidding to come in under the approved amount by the town of $14 million. And they deleted some of the wainscoting. Now, the wainscoting, although, you know, one of the, truly the best part about having the wainscoting, it's a wood material, obviously comes up about a third of the way up a wall. It's wood and it protects the wall from damage. Specifically, you, you know, wheelchairs, people with walkers. It, it would provide sustainability for the building and allow for, let's say, a better cosmetic appearance as well as prolong the, the period of time that the walls might have to be painted. So the building committee felt that this was an important part of the building for sustainability and not necessarily for looks, but more for the sustainability. And so we put it out to bid with the contractor and that came back at an additional amount of $73,020. The building committee moves that, moved that the select board approved this PCO contingent upon receipt by the town of a donation, the amount of $20,000 from the Long Meadow Adult Community Center Fund. In the amount, yeah, as I said, an amount of $20,000. And so I submit that to you for questions.
Okay, Mark Gold, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I, I, Mary Beth, you kind of ran through the last part. So you're saying it's 73020, but 20,000 would come from the fundraising? So the net difference would be 53020, is that what you're?
That is correct, that is correct, right.
So, and why was this deleted as part of value engineering?
Because they needed the bidding to come in under the $14 million.
So this is.
There was a number of things that were deleted. The building, for example, was made slightly smaller. There were some modifications in the plans. And then one of the things that evidently was deleted was the additional, no, I shouldn't say additional, the wainscoting. It really would be a benefit for the building.
73,000 going to come from?
The $73,000 would come from, well, it would be, not the town's portion of that would be 53,000. That would be coming from the contingency account. The total contingency account is $770,000. We have used $184,000 to date on all of the other PCOS that have been approved. So we have adequate funds to cover this. In addition, we have a bid savings, Paul can correct me on this if I'm wrong, between 900 and a million dollars, 900,000 and a million dollars. So we have adequate funds to cover this type of improvement that would prolong the cosmetic appearance and savings for the town in the long run in terms of painting on the interior.
My last question is, if it weren't wainscoting, is it just going to be sheet rock otherwise? Is that the?
Yes, correct, it would just be sheet rock, right. It would get dented up, yep, yep.
Yep.
Richard Foster?
No, I don't have any questions, Brian.
Yeah, I'm a big supporter of wainscoting. I think it really makes walls resistant to these small damaging holes and scratches that then need to be touched up and, and it wears well over time, it's easy to repair, so it sounds like a good idea.
That's what we thought.
Debbie, roll call.
Marie?
There's no motion.
Oh, is there a motion to approve the PCO 43?
Oh, no, there isn't.
Okay, a second, is there a second?
Second, second by Richard Foster.
Any further discussion? Okay, Debbie, roll.
Who did the motion?
Tom.
And then, second. Okay, Marie?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Gold, Tom, sorry.
Yes.
Thank you, let's go to the next PCO.
The next PCO that we're submitting to the select board for approval is PCO number 043, which is to revise the railing system insert panels from steel to a resin panel by Lumacor style rainforest vertical in the amount of $36,143 contingent upon receipt of an $18,000 donation from the Long Meadow Adult Community Center Fund. Essentially, the background on this is the, there were limited choices on the resin panel going into the grand staircase. The recommendation by the architect was for a plain steel panel with what I would call like a sheet of steel with dime sized holes in it that would go all the way up, extremely contemporary application. The decorator that is on board had found this particular product, which we approved with the understanding initially that it was not going to be terribly expensive. However, when the pricing came in, it resulted in a much higher dollar figure than was anticipated, which is what generated the PCO. The Long Meadow Adult Community Center Fund did receive a impactful donation from the Blakes that they are naming the grand staircase. And we felt that, given the donation that they gave, we would like to participate at 50% of the cost of this.
Okay, Mark Gold, any questions or comments?
Thank you, Mary Beth, I think it's a great idea. Just a quick question about the relative durability. I think steel, the word steel kind of said something to me. Resin or, or, you know, says something different. What do we believe to be the durability of the revised rail?
Yeah, that's a good question. I will say that steel, sort of, I look, think of same with steel, the appliances that I have at home and how, frankly, how quickly they mar. And you have to take a special cleaner to it to get the polish back, which I don't see happening on a, on a frequent basis over at the new adult center. The resin panels would simply take a, you know, clean, they're about a quarter of an inch thick and it's sort of, I want you to think of thick, thick Plexiglas. And embedded in this Plexiglas is sort of a grass like material. It's very pretty, it's very attractive. All of the other wall colors, carpeting, et cetera, were chosen to go, to, you know, go along with this particular panel that was chosen. Clearly between the two, geez, I have no idea which one might last the longer. I can tell you that the thickness of the resin is about a quarter of an inch and the thickness of the stainless steel is significantly less.
I just screenshot.
Mary Beth, Lynn has got.
Yes, thank you, yes, I, oh, you did put it up, Lynn?
Lynn put up a picture, which is great. I guess my only question is, you know, resin eventually is going to, something's going to happen to this. Are we buying spare panels or can we arrange? It just seems a shame, you know, eight, 10 years from now, we're going to have a broken panel because resin breaks, somebody's going to run into it with something.
Gosh, I hope not. Well, I can certainly make sure, usually there's stock material up that is left in the, in the, at the job site. We've actually made arrangements for that additional material to go up, up into the attic. Wednesday morning at the construction meeting, I'll make sure this price does include a couple of extra panels in the event of that occurrence taking place, Mark.
Thank you.
Yep.
Richard Foster?
No questions, Brian.
Tom Lakusha?
Yeah, I mean, with the photograph that we have on our screens, you could see that stainless steel really wouldn't fit in quite as well, so it looks good.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the PCO?
I'll make a motion to approve the PCO for the resin panels.
Is there a second?
Richard Foster's second, Richard Foster's second.
Thank you, any further discussion? Okay, roll call.
Marie?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark? Mark?
Can't hear you. Yes, 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 I was muted, sorry.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, all right, you want to go up to the next PCO, Mary Beth?
Yeah, the next PCOs are actually not, although they've been, I'm going to use the term vetted by the building committee. We tabled both PCOs. The feeling on the committee is they wanted to get some additional pricing and I'll certainly be glad to give you the background on that. We had on the table for quite a while requests from the residents to add two additional pickleball courts. We had two approved by the, I'm going to say included in the bid, but they would like an additional two pickleball courts. Clearly, as time has gone on, it has become very apparent that our residents, number one, are always looking for things to do outside, particularly given the virus. And secondly, the pickleball game is the fastest growing sport in the country, particularly by people over the age of 50. They very much enjoy the sport. In, in town, we had, we do have 12 courts in town, public courts. This would give us a total of eight. But the building committee, the, the, we tabled it indefinitely even, I'm just going to say I'm not indefinitely, three to four weeks because we want to get additional pricing from the contractor. But at this, if we, if the town were to approve those two additional pickleball courts, the nonprofit would consider or has committed to donating $50,000 towards those courts.
Okay, Mark, any questions?
Yeah, I guess, Mary Beth, you know, I looked at the first two change orders, certainly the, you know, the chair rail and, or the wainscoting and the, the railings as do it now because you won't get a chance to do it later. But it seems to me pickleball courts, you know, we can add those two years from now if, if, if we choose to. And it, it seems to me that we're paying a lot of money for pickleball courts. And I appreciate you saying you're looking for additional pricing, but I think we ought to look at, you know, what would the pricing be a year from now? If we went to a tennis court manufacturer and, you know, I mean, these, these per square foot are even more than we paid for the, the Blinn tennis courts, as I worked it out. And we paid a ridiculous amount for the Blinn tennis courts to surface. So I guess my question is, what would happen if we waited? You know, could we wait a year or two and, and do it through our capital planning? Dollars a dollar for the town, what is coming out of the project?
Right, I hear what you're saying, Mark, and I think, you know, your, your comments certainly have some validity. It could happen in the future. However, given the capital needs of the town, I'm not sure how much this would be considered a priority, particularly when there are so many other needs within the parks. If I just use, within the parks themselves, like Greenwood Park, there are so many improvements that could be made. I'm not sure that pickleball courts would come high on the list. And this gives us an opportunity, the town the opportunity, to get these two courts in at, with the donation at a particularly attractive price. That being said, that the reason that the, the building committee asked that, voted for it to be tabled was that they want to get a price on one court. Now, clearly with one court, the nonprofit would not be donating this amount of money. And so that would be sort of a town decision at some point in the future. Part of the price on this too, I should explain. Although there were cores taken of geotechnical conditions at the, at the site, we have found that the site is very wet, I think you're probably aware of that. There's a lot of drainage that goes down, that did go down towards the swale. And although all of that seems to have been mitigated around the building, it hasn't been mitigated underneath where these courts would go. So part of the price on this is to dig another 18 inches to two feet down and install gravel so we are sure that we have a stable base. Now, that same task would be required in two years to be able to dig down. Otherwise, the courts would be compromised and not be sustained over a longer period of time. So although this sounds like it's a lot, it is a lot of money for.
It's 120,000 dollars, nobody's bitching the amount. It's 120,000 dollars for two pickleballs. I'd like to ask Paul Pesterzik if I could, you know, could, could we go ahead and find, is there a way to use the capital appropriate for the adult center that's unspent? When we go to, I know we have to unappropriate that capital. Could we then vote to appropriate some of it for pickleball courts back at that time, Paul?
It would all depend on the statutes of how long a pickleball court, the estimated life and how long we could borrow for. The bond proceeds, the excess bond proceeds could be used for anything that we could bond for an equal or longer period of time. So I, I would probably assume we borrow for 20, well, we did borrow for 20 years. You know, the question is, does that, does a pickleball court or a tennis court last, you know, 20 years? I don't know off the top of my head.
May I, may I also step in at this price, in addition to that additional excavation? If this is at prevailing wage and if the town were to decide to go ahead two years, four years, seven years from now, each year that it increases, the price increases for wages and for materials and the average escalation is 5%. So although this seems like an awful lot of money now, and I don't argue it, next year, the year after, the year after that, just add 5% per year for escalation.
I think it's important for people.
Union wages, yeah, I know.
But, but Mary Beth, I mean, when we do it as part of the project, we have a 10% markup, you know, you know, we have a 5, a 5% OPM charge. I mean, we've got all the charges as opposed to just contracting with somebody to put in pickleball courts. That's my only point is, doing it as part of a project, there, there are lots of added, added costs and it's expensive enough as it is. I, I mean, I, I, I support the pickleball court. I'm just not sure financially, the time to do it as part of a project and especially a change order of a project where we're paying, you know, subcontractors, additions on subcontractors, an addition for Monford, an addition for this, an addition for that, as opposed to go out and get, you know, the actual bid and just pay for that. That's, that's my only point.
And you're correct, the act, the actual bid for the courts is 112,509. There's a 5% overhead and profit for WJ Monford, which is 5,625 and there's their additional bonding cost of 1772. So they, yes, they are getting another $7,300 for being the GC on the project. But the subcontractor's price to put in the extra pickleball courts is $112,000. With, and you see that, I assume that the back, you have the backup to go with that.
Yes, thank you.
So, yeah, so add 5% to the subcontractors per year that it's tabled or postponed. So we'll be coming back to you on this specifically for, you know, once we review the additional pricing for doing one court versus two courts.
Marie, I'd like to comment.
I'm coming to you, Richard. Richard, do you have a question or a comment?
Yeah, I have a comment. I, I understand that we got people that are coming up and wanting to do extras, but I'm, I'm very much.
I'm, I'm very much bothered by this one. This is, this is a scope creep. This is not, this is not an engineered change order or something of value engineering. This is, this is going beyond the scope of what was approved at town meeting. I think anything of this nature needs to go back to town meeting.
Okay, Tom Lakusha?
Well, I think anything that gets, you know, people over the age of 50 out exercising in the sunlight is a good idea. And I think my, Mark brings up a lot of good points about making sure it's gonna work out to our advantage. Usually when you are building a project, it would should be less expensive and, because they're gonna have all the equipment to build all the other courts, it should be less expensive. So I guess that would be helpful, you know, when we go through this, Mary Beth, to look at, are there any savings by doing it now versus later? Because that might be easier for us to process in terms of making a decision of positive or negative.
Well, the, the existing included in the, in the design is two pickleball courts. That wasn't at alternate, it was number six. I can get that exact figure for you, but I believe it was around this number, 120 to 140, for the initial two courts. So I mean, this, you know, in terms of the pricing, it falls within that same umbrella.
Okay.
But I can get that exact number for you, be glad to.
All right, thank you.
We're not really looking, but I felt it was important to, you know, present this to the board so they understand what's coming down the pike.
Sure, okay. And then the last PCO, did you want me to go through that one? It also has to do with that area of the job site, and specifically the pickleball courts?
Yes.
Okay. If you're familiar with the Greenwood Park and the location of the building and the ports, it is in direct sun from day, from daybreak to sunset, just about sunset. That in the summertime, it gets, it'll be very hot over there. And clearly, there are people who would love to wa, just sit and watch the game, or as they're waiting to be able to play. And so we were recommended that perhaps a canopy were to provide some shade would be appropriate. So we are reviewing, and again, table, we have tabled this PCO subject to getting additional pricing to install two canopies and the associated concrete work at the pickleball courts for a total of $42,323, of which the nonprofit was willing to contribute about 50% of that or $20,000.
Okay, Mark Gold, do you have any questions or comments on that PCO?
My, my comments to the prior one all apply, but Mary Beth, can I suggest that you talk to, maybe Lynn or somebody about, take that canopy and put a few solar panels on top of it and it'll pay for itself?
That would be good to me. I'd be, I'd be totally in favor of that.
Seriously, and, and you can get a subsidy for it because you're doing it as solar panels, not as a canopy.
Um, Richard Foster?
Uh, no, no comment on that, Marie. I mean, we, I, I was, come back to Tom, he said, anything to get the seniors out in the sun, well, let's, we're gonna put them back in the shade on this one.
Not too much. Uh, Tom Lakusha?
Yeah, I guess I'd like an estimate of, how often do people actually watch people play? We might have some statistics or some, some ideas. Because, you know, I know on a hot day, I don't like watching other people work hard, to tell you the truth.
I don't know if I can, I don't know if I can come up with those statistics personally. I've never played the game.
You're from the pickleball people, I, I promise you guys.
Well, there's no place, there's no place for anyone to sit now to watch them play.
Well, that's true.
You, you can't even get in the room because there's so many people waiting.
Anything else you wanted to add, Mary Beth?
No, I don't think so. No.
Well, thank you very much, and we'll look forward to hearing back after your board decides on those two items.
Okay, and Paul can expect a check from the Long Meadow Adult Community Center Fund for the other two PCOs this week?
Wonderful.
Okay.
If anyone wants to donate to your organization, what is your website for the fundraiser group?
It's, they can just do a Google search, Long Meadow Adult Community Center Fund, and it's the, it's prime, it's known as the LACCf, and we would be happy to take donations in any amount of money.
Sounds wonderful. Thank you.
Okay.
And, and Mary Beth, you guys just sent out a mailer this last week, right?
That is correct, yes. I mean, we've been a little hampered, not a little hampered, we've been a lot hampered by the COVID situation. You know, we have not been able to go out and do person-to-person asks, nor do we anticipate being able to do that in the foreseeable future. But we did want the community, particularly those over the age of 60, to know that they can participate. As it is now, we have hundreds of people who have contributed. There's great support within the community for this building. Lots of people are interested in participating once they're, we're able to open. So, you know, anybody is welcome to participate. All donors will be recognized.
Wonderful. Thank you again for all your work, Mary Beth.
Oh, you're welcome, Marie. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna jump back up to the Select Board Recognition Awards discussion and vote because we were talking about having another award. We were trying to figure out what to name it, and we came up with some ideas. Does anyone have a motion or some comments, Richard Foster?
Yeah, hold on, hold one minute, Marie. I'm trying to find it on my agenda again, okay?
Sure, okay. Lynn, do you wanna give us? Clean it up from their agenda?
Sorry, I couldn't hear what you said.
You wanna tell us what you came up with for the second award that we were thinking of starting to give out at town meeting?
Was this your, your hero award you were looking to do?
Right.
Okay.
Name for the second award.
I, I don't have that contact information for that individual.
No, no, I'm talking about the names. We're gonna vote on what we're gonna call the second award. So.
Marie, I have the list in front of me.
Okay, you wanna read that out loud?
Sure. The suggested names for the Select Board Award are, one, Citizen Recognition Award, two, Lifetime Achievement Award, three, Long Meadow Heroes, four, Distinguished Citizen Award, and five, Community Service Recognition Award.
Okay, so does any, right now, we just have a Citizens Award, that it's almost become like a Lifetime Achievement Award. We were talking about having a second type of award that we gave out for exceptional service for that specific year. Mark, do you personally have a preference on what we call some of these? And then I'm gonna check with every board member.
Sure. I, I think that the Lifetime Achievement Award could be called either the Distinguished Citizens Award or the Community Service Recognition Award, the la, one of the last two. I think that the annual special one-time thing ought to be a Citizen Recognition Award. So I favor Citizen Recognition Award for the one-time, and I favor Distinguished Citizen Award for the Lifetime Achievement Award.
Okay, Richard Foster, what do you think?
Not that differently than Mark, not really. Distinguished Citizen Award, I mean, that, that's good. And also the Citizen Recognition Award. The, the other one, though, was Citizen of the Year, which had some significance to it, that it usually would pertain to some event taking place that year that the citizen was being recognized for. The way the Citizen Recognition Award is a general award, could be easily confused with Distinguished Citizen Award. You see what I mean?
Yeah, but I think what we'll have to do is we'll have to have descriptions of it on the nomination papers. So do you like Distinguished Citizen, Distinguished Citizen Award? And the other one was Citizen Recognition, or do you wanna make the second one Citizen of the Year as the Citizen Recognition?
Well, my preference has always been to have Citizen of the Year and then the Lifetime Achievement Award. That's been my preference. But if anything that separates those and makes a significant difference in it, the one, basically, in my own envisionment, Marie, is something that happened this year in our community that we wanna recognize someone for. And the other one is the one where we're wanting to recognize a lifetime of service to our community. They're two very distinctly different awards.
The Citizen of the Year could be called of outstanding service in the year 2020 to the town of Long Meadow? Is that what you're thinking of? And then the St. Citizen Award would be Lifetime Achievement or a Lifetime Committed to Service?
Yeah, along that line, yes. That's, that's my feeling.
Okay, Tom, how do you feel about it?
Well, I think this is a good, a good move. There are some citizens that, you know, we could recognize specifically for something they're doing that's really special for the town. And, and then we also have this Lifetime Achievement Award. The only thing I see missing from here is the term of a volunteer, because, again, I think majority of people who are gonna get these awards are doing some voluntary service to the town. But, you know, perhaps the last one listed, the Community Service Recognition Award, could be, have, you know, the word volunteer in there, like Community Volunteer Recognition Award. Because I think it's important to re-recognize the term volunteerism because it's, it's, it's an important thing that people do is, is volunteer. And, and sometimes we, you know, we, we have volunteers that are such strong professionals, they have such great backgrounds, that we ask them to, to give us advice that we would probably pay a consultant for. But really, they are volunteers and, and, you know, I think it's helpful for people to be seen as volunteers sometimes.
Okay, I'm gonna check everyone's ideas. I'll come up with a, some things for the next meeting, and you can all edit it. That's all, send it to you at a time, okay?
Marie, can I add, can I add one thing? The, Tom, I agree with John, the volunteers, but we, we have to remember there are different volunteer events that take place during the year at the library and at the senior center where we have the major amount of volunteer services put in. They always have, they always have a recognition program in place for the volunteers.
Yeah, so this would be like the, the super volunteer. You know, this would be the volunteer who is being recognized above all other volunteers.
This sounds like the national press, what, the super duper volunteer?
I don't think those are the terms I'm gonna use, but, but that would be, you know, if we look at the, the Volunteer Service Recognition Award, you know, you know, somehow that we would maybe say that it would be the Town Volunteer Award, you know, somehow, we have to get the wording on it. But it would be a person who would, you know, be recognized above all of those other, sort of, you know, smaller organizations that they've really contributed to, to the town in a, in a great, in a way that, you know, just, they've moved beyond that level. You know, they may have at least received that award several times. And so, you know, we can look at the wording and hopefully we come up with something we can agree on.
Okay, but Marie, can I add one closing comment? We do have a volunteer recognition program in town that has service pins that are given out. I mean, there's a lot of work that's been done on that particular program in its own right. I'd be a little concerned that we're throwing on another award off to the side of this, and I wonder, I mean, how can you do any more than give a, a person a 30-year volunteer pin, Tom? I mean, that's a pretty major recognition of their services.
Right, so if you have a term that says Community Service Recognition Award, I mean, I don't see what the, the problem is going to get, you know, Community Volunteer Recognition Award.
Well, I think we're gonna also have a descriptor of what the title means, so I'll, I'll play around with it, and you guys love to edit me, so I'm sure there'll be, I'll get it to you ahead of time so you can add your ideas, Mark.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to say, Marie, when you do this, just keep in mind, I think one of the initial thoughts was that, you know, we wanted one award that was given annually, but a second award that we could give if a situation occurred that merited somebody being recognized for what they did specifically. And so I don't want it to get so much that we, you know, we gotta wait till the town meeting for, for whatever it is that, something that somebody did a while. So I just wanna keep that in mind.
That's a good idea. Okay, thank you. So we'll, I'll pull some things together for my last. I just wanted to, my fourth idea by you, and again, we're gonna probably, about it, and we wanna have. While about having the nonprofits who are actually contributing to our departments in town have some sort of reporting policy to the town. And annually, whether they have to file with the town that they, you know, they are still an active organization, they give a copy maybe of their 990 tax form, how much they've raised from the residents, how much they've contributed, something that gives us an idea that they're compliant with all the requirements and rules in, in the Commonwealth, since they are working with the town. And right now, there, there's nothing like that. And I think it's, it's, shouldn't be very burdensome, but I wanted to see how people felt about the Select Board putting together what I call is a nonprofit reporting policy. So, Richard Foster, do you have any thoughts on that?
No, I wanna listen more to the discussion, Marie.
Okay, I, I wrote down some ideas, and I think what was mentioned, I'm not sure who told me, that we really should be pulling out Paul. I mentioned it to Paul, and he said we really need to pull in our legal opinion before we pull, you know, we, we, we finally have a written policy. Mark Gold, what, do you have any comments or thoughts on this?
I was gonna say what you just said, Marie. I think it's a great idea, but I'm not sure legally we have, I mean, they're, they're not, they're all 501(c)(3)'s, they're all nonprofits, which means they, they are answerable to the Secretary of State of the Commonwealth. And, and to say that we're gonna put a, a reporting requirement or somehow on top of that may be something we can't do. I think, I think, I think there ought to be some accountability to the people that they're raising money from and are raising money to. So let's go for it and see what we can do, but gonna go through it with a, kind of a grain of salt.
Tom?
Well, I think this is a good thing to look into because, you know, the nonprofits in town, there should be a way that people know exactly how many nonprofits we are, what their missions are, and how, the relationship they have with the community, and, you know, ways our community can help those nonprofits, and, and ways that they service us. I mean, there are a lot of things that the nonprofits are doing that we may be, that all the citizens in town may be unaware of. So, yeah, I think we should look into it more. It sounds good.
And I think what I've discovered the past few years is that, of course, we realized that legally we were providing services and resources to the nonprofits that we weren't supposed to be doing. But some of them were having trouble getting their paperwork to the Secretary of State filing with the IRS. And, and I think we should have a cooperative relationship, but also we should make sure everyone's doing, the town as well as the nonprofits, what they're supposed to be doing to keep it legal. Paul or Lynn, did you have any comments on the possible policy?
I don't. Again, I think it's something that council really needs to look at. You know, it'd be nice, we could probably each go through our listserv and see if somebody has a, something that might already be written to start the process. But I think there are gonna be some legalities that, that need to be, get over those hurdles.
Okay, so Lynn, could you talk to, run this by our town council?
Yes, I will do that.
Great, thank you. All right, we're going to move on before, I'm, I'm pushing the town manager evaluation to the end. So the only thing I have is this huge thing we have to get through, which is water rates, sewer rates, billable units, stormwater. So Paul, do you wanna take over this?
Okay, first of all, I did provide a cover that explained how I calculated most of the rate calculations. We're talking about three votes particularly, one to establish the water rates that will go into effect for next fiscal year, the sewer rate, and the stormwater, stormwater fee. It is basically a calculation. You've, have seen the spreadsheet before over the years. I will start with the water rate. The biggest thing that I want to say is, is I basically, I just, I tear apart the budget and break it down into a number of categories, and you'll see that in the last column. The biggest thing that has changed there is our charges from Springfield, when it's broken down per unit, actually went up from a dollar 35 to one, I'm sorry, a dollar 38. actually went up from $1.35 to one, I'm sorry, $1.38 to $1.65. The other, you know, that's a pretty substantial increase, so 27 cents. And then we also have some coupling of that with the next layer of DPW debt that is taken into consideration that is assigned to the water and sewer. But the good thing is a lot of that debt for the DPW, it was an increase of almost $295,000 in the debt for DPW, a lot of that increase was actually absorbed because we had paid off a number of other previous authorization. And as you'll see, the debt service actually drops a slight amount. I kept in, into this calculation, the $100,000 that we would put into reserves. The water reserves right now are estimated for next fiscal year at a low amount of $250,000. I kept that in, I looked at the, and that basically gives us an amount that we would need to raise of, in order to cover all these calculations of just over $3 million. What we have, I did look at the revenues that we are getting, I bumped those up a little bit. We still have, we are getting proceeds, interest on proceeds from some of the bonds and some of the other ancillary things that the water department does. I was able to raise those ancillary revenues to offset what would actually need to be raised in rates. Those amounts went up by $20,000 from $85,000 to 105. So when you subtract that out, what we need to do is raise nearly $2.95 million in order to cover the water budget that is proposed for town meeting through water rates. I looked at the five-year calculation of billable units. I saw that it has remained relatively stable for the most part, but I did note that we do not actually write that many abatements or have many corrections to make. So I used a small factor of 10%, I'm sorry, of 2% to accommodate, you know, some type of an abatement amount in there. So the number of units that we normally use in calculating the rate was $788,000. I bumped that up slightly to $792,000, I'm sorry, 792 units, 792,000 units. And when you do that division and put that into the $2.95 million that we need to raise, the calculation comes out to 2.0, I'm sorry, 3.72, $3.72. That is the mathematical calculation of the rate proposed, that's the rate that I would recommend. I know it is a large increase of 27 cents or 7.8%, which is, again, a fairly substantial amount. But again, that largest portion is coming from the charges that we're being passed on from the city of Springfield. So when there's not much we can do about that.
And the percentage increase on that from Springfield is roughly?
It, they're 19.4% increase from Springfield.
19.4, okay. I just wanted that for the residents to hear. Mark Gold?
Here we go.
Okay, maybe I should go with everyone first.
No, I think it's valuable. Paul has shared this with me and a few other things with me because he knows I've got a particular interest in this. But I would point out that at the last annual town meeting, or maybe it was the last fall town meeting, I think it was fall town meeting, we approved a modification to the rate of waters meters, excuse me, of water department, that we can now have a fixed and variable rate. The fixed rate is intended to be, in my opinion, and since I've been pushing this, as a minimum fee for people who are out of towners who don't use their fee, and we haven't implemented that. And so, having looked at this, you know, if we went back to our 2011 rates of of what we were proposing for meter rates, which is, you know, $15.59 for the three residential meters and, you know, $27.72 for one-inch meter, et cetera, et cetera, and Paul put those together, we'd raise a total today of $107,984. And that's what we worked out, and if you put that in as, if you will, people who are not paying anything because they're away and plus some other people, but it would reduce the rate from $3.72 to $3.58. That $3.58 is an 8.3% increase. And so, I would like to suggest as an alternative, we implement the approved of, you know, what I'll call meter fee or minimum charge fee, it's not a minimum, it's a fixed charge fee, excuse me, that would bring in a total of $107,984 based on Paul's analysis of that. And then instead of water rate of $3.58 as opposed to a water rate of $3.72.
I'd like to go back to Paul to have Paul's input on that. Because you were talking, you weren't talking about a, you didn't mention the meter rate.
I did not mention the meter rate, however, I did do the calculations in the background. And as Mark said, if that, the last time that we had that implemented was back in 2011. We did go to town meeting, it was last November, we had changed the bylaw that originally said that we could only charge for metered water. The bylaw was changed so that it not only could be metered water, it could be a type of fixed charge that, again, we could go back to this meter charge. And Mark is absolutely right, if we utilize the rates that were in place and roughly with the same size meter, same size meter piping, we're $108,000 we could raise, and it would, exactly as Mark said, it would be 14 cents off the rate for the $3.58. So I, you know, I can't, I can't argue with what Mark says, it's exactly true.
Is there a downside to the numbers of going that way? I mean, are people paying more out of pocket?
It all depends on your water usage. With that fixed charge, there would be a certain, and I did not calculate the break even point, but, you know, the extreme case is if you are not a big user, you're a very small user in volume of water, you would be paying a little bit more. If you're a large user, you would be paying a little bit less.
Okay, and is it ever egregiously more for some people? I mean, do we have a single elderly person living in a small house all of a sudden is going to get a huge water bill because?
$15.52, Marie, that's, that's $15.52 for residents.
Right, right, so they would get a bill that potentially is like $15 higher at the most.
At the most, okay, that's what I wanted to make sure. Okay, Richard Foster?
What would you like, Marie?
Do you have any questions or comments?
No, no, I'm just listening.
Tom Lakusha?
Yeah, when you look at what's done in other states like Vermont, New Hampshire, our neighbors, where people have a lot of vacation properties, you know, people are paying a fixed rate. You know, there are people who are only there in the summers, but they pay a fixed rate and they just see that as part of the way that they contribute to the community. And so, you know, I think if we've gone through the trouble to make the changes and voters have approved those bylaw changes, you know, that I think we should consider it strongly, I would support it.
Lynn or Paul, do you have any problems with the new proposal that Mark's making?
No, I do not.
All right, is there a motion to approve Mark's split rate?
I just think, Mark, we would probably need to read the actual dollar amounts per meter size.
I thought so too, Paul, I think we do.
Yeah.
So I'll make the motion, Marie, since I have the information in front of me. I'll move that we, as Water and Sewer Commissioners, we impose a meter, a fixed fee for water usage based on meter size as follows, Debbie, I can email this to you so you don't have to get it all down. For five eighths meters, for five eighths by three-quarter inch meters, and for three-quarter inch meters, primary meters for residents, the fee would be $15.59. For a one-inch meter would be $27.72. For a one-and-a-half inch meter would be $62.36. For a two-inch meter would be $110.86. For a three-inch meter would be $249.44. And for a four-inch meter, of which I should point out there are only five in town, the fee would be $443.45. And based on those meter rates, I would propose that we set a water rate of $3.58 for 100 cubic feet.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, further discussion. Okay, roll call vote.
Marie?
Yes.
Richard? Richard?
Yes, yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to now talk about the sewer rate? Paul?
Okay, we have the same type of calculation, we have a proposed budget in the last column, broken down into the different categories. You'll see that, again, the Springfield charges are going up quite not as much, but they are going up a few dollars there from $600,000 to $645,000. The actual other big charge there that is within the budget is our debt service goes up almost $100,000 and that is totally attributable to the portion of the DPW facility that is assigned to the sewer. Again, taking that budget, historically, we've added $100,000 in reserves. I did not add that into this calculation because the reserves in the sewer funds are adequate at this point in time, estimated to be about $800,000 for next fiscal year. So in order to mitigate some of these increases, I did not add that, just for an FYI. I again looked at the revenue, looked at the fixed charges where we do have a connection charge already that's been established, looked at the current revenues there. I did bump up the other ancillary revenues a little bit. Again, I think I, in total, I have the right amount, but there should be a higher amount in interest and a lower mark, a lower amount in other because of the interest on the bond proceeds. But the bottom line remains the same. We then have an amount that we need to raise through rates, that $1.8 million, $1.8 million, utilizing the same number of estimated units that are billable, come up with a recommended rate of $2.66.
And that is an increase of how much percentage?
That's a little over a 3% increase.
And how much percentage increase do we have from Springfield?
The Springfield one looks like about a 7% increase.
Richard Foster, any questions or comments?
No, I don't have any questions, Frank.
Mark Gold?
No questions.
Tom Lakusha?
No questions.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the recommended sewer rate of 2.66?
I'll move that we approve a sewer rate for the 2021 fiscal year of $2.66 for hundreds cubic feet of water with a cap as we have normal in the past.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Further discussion. All right, roll call vote?
Marie?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, you want to go on to the stormwater fee?
Stormwater fee is something we had discussed back during the budget process. The recommended budget that is going to the annual town meeting is roughly $890,000. There was a commitment, an actual policy vote in FY21, 57.5% would be funded through a tax subsidy and 42.5% would be funded through stormwater fees. So when I subtract the amount of tax subsidy from the annual budget, it leaves us $378,118 that needs to be raised through the stormwater fees. We bill on what's known as a equivalent residential unit. We relatively have 7,725 ERUs, the equivalent residential units in town. However, those are, some of them do get credits per se and is dropping. So in order to raise the $378,000 needed, we would roughly need a a residential unit to cover that $4.43 for FY21 as opposed to the $3.39 amount that is currently there in FY20. That amount is fairly substantial, certainly it's, you know, almost a third per se. But it is driven by two factors, one, the budget is going up $40,000, and two, the amount of the stormwater fees that are actually covering, recovering the enterprise fund are jumping from 34.6% up to 42.5%. And again, that was as voted on the 20th of January of this year in a policy that was approved by the Select Board. The only thing that I am modifying slightly is that we do need a little bit higher amount allowance for credits as people become a little more involved with the stormwater management. We just don't have the revenues, but again, the numbers I have provided already take that into consideration. So the recommendation is for a ERU of $4.43 per month or annualized $53.20 per year.
Okay, thank you, Richard Foster, any questions or comments?
Yeah, Paul, what did that fee, what was that fee the first year we implemented?
Ooh, $2 and something, I think. I actually think we paid like $27 per year.
And we've had it in for three years?
This is our third year, yes.
Okay, where's the end?
Well, once we have it 100% funded by fees.
I don't think, I don't, I don't recall there ever being a decision that it would ever be 100% funded by fees. I think that's been a, something that has crept into the discussion. It was meant to offset some of the costs because you, I think there is no way that we've been spending that much on stormwater. We have now generated a program, we've sliced out a piece of our DPW operation to place against these fees. And that's why I questioned that all along, is that we don't seem to have a, to me, we don't seem to have a well-defined program other than we have developed in a spending program where it keeps escalating up every year. It's sort of like back when we were hitting up the sewage accounts and the water accounts for X amount of people and then five, 10 years later, everybody says, whoops, we couldn't do that, and now we had to pay all that money back on the base dollars. And it seemed like we're doing the same thing here.
Rich, I'm just trying to find that vote that was taken of the Select Board. You know, there was a vote that was taken, maybe it didn't get to 100%, although I think the vote taken was to get to 100% about maybe in over 15-year period.
Yeah, and I would question, and I would question when you're looking there on what factor the 100% was at that point, because it seems like we, we've got a target that's not stale, it's moving on us and it keeps going up and up and up. I mean, theoretically, you and I both know we could likely spend $4 million a year on stormwater infrastructure. But I don't think the fee was ever going to be designed to do it. That fee was originally supposed to be put in effect to offset the cost of the MS4 permitting process and there were legal requirements of that, not to fund the entire stormwater program which the town should have been putting away money into their capitalizing program for year after year after year.
Mark Gold, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I agree with Richard, one of the things that we haven't done that I think would help us a lot, and I'd ask that we do this, is again, look at our distribution of DPW charges to its now six departments. It's got water, sewer, stormwater, buildings, you know, roadways, you know, maintenance. You know, we originally had an arbitrary distribution of those charges and then we went through and we did a study and it was somewhat detailed over a many-month period of time. many-month period of time, but since then, now we've added this stormwater department, and not looked at what the actual costs are for the DPW, because I think Richard's right. It was originally just to, to cover the added costs brought about by MS four mandates, federal mandates. And we're way beyond that, because there's no way we're spending this kind of money on, on, on MS four mandates. You know, so we've created a monster, we've done something that helps us balance the budget, leaving DPW charges off the tax bill into a, another utility. So in, until we know what it really should get charged, you know, I, I'm disappointed that we've got rates going up thirty-one percent.
Tom?
Yeah, uh, so Paul, in the uh, the statement that you, the, the additional information you gave us, you show in fiscal year twenty nineteen, an annual operating budget of six hundred and fifty-two, you know, six hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars, right?
Yes.
And, and then next year, into twenty twenty-one, it's going to be eight hundred and ninety thousand. And what, you know, is that due to the uh, new federal regulations? Is that why it's budgets, you know, that's why the operating budget's gone up that much?
Um, I, I would probably want to defer some of that to the DPW director. Um, I'm gonna have to say though, some of those charges are for the capital programs and the drainage um, capital projects that we put into place also. Just trying to find my budgetary information. Um, you know, and I believe in two thousand and nineteen, the debt service was just, it was eighty thousand dollars. And you know, that alone has basically doubled to well over, you know, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. There is a hundred thousand dollar increase right there. Um, the wages have gone up from roughly three hundred and seventy thousand to three hundred and eighty-eight thousand. Um, there are a few new light items that came into play this year. We have one for employee training, and one for outfall testing, that's twenty thousand dollars. Some increases for camera work. A drop in street sweeping for catch basin cleaning, I'm sorry. So to get into a lot of those details, um, I can only provide you the numbers. I can't actually give you the detail behind some of those numbers, though.
Okay, all right.
Other than the, the debt service.
Yeah, but I think that it's, it's similar to, you know, comments or questions brought by Richard and Mark. It sounds like, you know, this budget can just keep going up, and it, it's covering a lot of things that are not due to federal mandates for improving stormwater. And um, yeah, I agree. I, I thought originally we were looking at, here's these increased amounts of money we're gonna need to fix our stormwaters um, flowing system. And this fund was gonna be, you know, to cover the increases, but not to slowly increase everything that was on that budget. Because yeah, this is a pretty big jump, and I know we can keep doing this, but it's uh, I don't know if that's really was the plan of this stormwater fee from the beginning. I mean, I didn't think that was a plan, and I don't think voters felt that that was a plan either.
Well, I think that um, we did change. Um, we were looking to, one of the reasons we put the stormwater was not just the MS four testing that we were going to have to do, but right now, our stormwater costs are millions of dollars every year. That was being left on the backs of the private homeowners, the residential property taxes. And uh, all of the nonprofits are huge um, owners of land in Long Meadow were not part of it. They were not paying for the stormwater costs, even though they were contributing to the cost. The stormwater enterprise fund was started to, order to pay for some of this testing, but also to take some of this off the backs of the property owners, and it spread it according to who was using it. The auditors came in and informed us, you have an enterprise fund, you have to use it as an enterprise fund, which means you have to start tying it to your costs. And that's why we took the vote in January, realizing there was going to be a period of time that we were going to have to start increasing and actually treating it like an enterprise fund, rather than just a fee we were tacking on. Uh, and that's where the vote came in, and that's where we said, let's do it over many, many years, because we're talking about a huge number of our capital projects are stormwater, were built on sand. And um, Merryweather, all of these huge uh, collapses that we're now seeing next to the DPW, the collapses of Jingles uh, in Bliss Park, all of these things have to be dealt with, and we need to have a way of dealing with it when we're coming to hit the ceiling. So that's why the vote went in January. This is inching it up a little bit more, and um, that is the direction it's taking. If we do not want to treat this as an enterprise fund, then we have to re-vote this, that it's not an enterprise fund. We actually got into trouble with the auditors, because the auditor said, hold it, you have this uh, waste management enterprise fund that you're not using it as an enterprise fund. You gotta get rid of that, or else you have to use it as an enterprise fund. So that's sort of where we are. I was expecting this to go up uh, substantially over the next fifteen years, so we spread the pain uh, among everybody that has uh, that's contributing to the problem of the stormwaters. So um, I do support the fee going up. I do, though, agree with Richard, is we have to now define what is a stormwater project. And what is our long-range plan, capital plan for stormwaters, so that it doesn't become a issue where, oh, we're gonna call that stormwater, we're gonna call that stormwater, let's push that over into the stormwater enterprise. So I think we do need to sit down and look at policies of what do we consider a stormwater pro, part of the stormwater program, and what is our goals with the stormwater enterprise fund? Um.
Yeah, very well stated. Uh, you know, it helps, your, your description really helps, uh, help us get a grip on this. I think what might be helpful for voters to see is how much money some of the nonprofits have been contributing, so then it doesn't seem like uh, such a big jump that just taxpayers are, are taking alone, uh, that the nonprofits who do not pay, you know, property tax, you know, are contributing, you know, maybe whatever percentage that is, uh, or even a number figure. I think that might be helpful. Um, because ultimately, we're, we're answerable to the, the people who pay the taxes, and, and we should show them how this is really an advantage to them. And um, so, thank you.
I think that would be a very nice part of the reporting, Paul. And uh, of course, that's something the board will have to deal with in the future, too. Uh, Mark, did you wait, raise your hand?
Yeah, I, I just want, Paul, if, could you go through some numbers with me again? I'm trying to understand this, because you've, you've got the annual operating budget, and it's going up five and a half percent from, from eight forty-three to, to eight ninety, basically, okay? Eight or ninety thousand, so it's going up five and a half percent, and yet the stormwater fee, you know, is going up thirty percent.
Right.
You know, is, is all that difference made up by the, the reduced amount of, of?
Tax subsidy, the reduced amount of tax subsidy.
Okay. All right, so we've reduced the tax, tax, so basically, we've done that because we're moving more money?
Towards fees.
Towards fees, okay.
Yeah. And again, I, I just sent you the policy, um, you know, and I, I understand what Ri- Ri- Richard is saying about um, what is um, should be taken into consideration and what not is, or what should not be taken into consideration, but you know, the select board has committed to an FY twenty-one subsidy of fifty-seven point five percent with additional commitment to reduce the general fund subsidy by z, to zero by twenty thirty-six in equal increments. So every year, we're going to get this creeping. Now, it, again, I understand Richard's statement. Um, we just may have to segregate this, this budget into what's going to be included in, in this calculation, and what's going to be excluded. Prior to this, the whole budget was included.
All right, any other questions or comments for Paul? Is there, uh, Mark?
Quick comment, I mean, the budget's done, this is included in the budget. It's not like we got, got a choice at this point, do we?
Um, you know, the reality is, they're all estimates. Um, if, if we do not raise this type of income, it basically is gonna have to come out of the tax levy. So the three hundred and eleven thousand dollars that you have in the excess tax levy, everything, if everything else remains as planned, would be reduced.
Thank you.
All right, is there a motion to approve the fee of four forty-three for the stormwater?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve a stormwater utility fee of four dollars and forty-three cents per month per ERU.
Is there a second?
I'll second it, Marie.
Okay, um, further discussion?
Yeah, Marie, I would just um, like to know that we could get some kind of report on the numbers, you know, to, so we can actually see and, and explain to people that um, because of the fund, because we're raising the money this way, that nonprofits are contributing this percentage or this dollar figure. It would be nice if we could get that. And so, Paul, I don't know if that's possible?
Yeah, it, it should be. It'd take a little legwork to identify the nonprofits, but we can certainly track that down.
Yeah, because that would be helpful for me in terms of making uh, agreeing with this vote. Thank you.
Could you add the, um, also the commercial properties? Because a lot of them pay much larger numbers than the individual homeowners do, which are at a fixed.
Okay.
But a lot of them are paying less because they put in stormwater swales, like the folks on Dwight Road, the new medical center, they've got stormwater swales, so they're, they've got a huge exemption from the, you know, or abatement, I guess, is the bright phrase.
It's still a high number, so if you could get, give the breakdown to the board, that would be great.
Of course, the new construction is, it's not optional. They have to put those stormwater swales in there, right? So.
All right, uh, roll call vote?
Marie?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. It, it, that's it, Paul, right?
Uh, those are the votes that I needed, yes, thanks.
Okay, I think the only thing we have left is the town manager evaluation discussion. Um, and Lynn, are you able to talk?
I think so. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, wanna know if you have anything you wanna talk about your past six months?
Well, before we jump into that, I just uh, wanted to, because I was having issues earlier on. The one thing in my manager's report that I did wanna make sure um, was caught while people may still be watching, uh, is that we have the Bliss and Laurel uh, master landscape plan, the second public forum will be Thursday night uh, at seven PM, and uh, you can access that Zoom meeting information by going to longmeadow.org forward slash restore Bliss and Laurel, if you wanted to join. Uh, we do anticipate that we will see um, some possible designs at that meeting as well, so that, that would, that should be an interesting meeting for people to uh, attend if they can. And that was it for my, my report that I wanted to make sure I covered.
Great. Well, you wanna tell us a little bit what it's been like working in Long Meadow since December? Interesting experience?
Uh, yes, yes. Um, well, it was certainly, you know, the learning curve in and of itself is, is a challenge, you can just uh, jump in communities and uh, switching roles. Um, and felt like I was kinda getting some good footing uh, going into February. Had getting a good lay of the land and had met quite a few people, and was, you know, working hard to um, finish getting up to speed with as much as I could, and then um, the world really changed. And in some respects, um, it's made it in a little easier, because I've built relationships with departments, uh, probably a little bit faster than I would have normally, because we've had to interact so frequently, specifically, you know, the fire department and um, HR and, and Paul. Um, those, you know, are pretty much daily interactions, you know, Beverly Herschorn and the health department. Um, but now, um, I'm having really frequent communication with all department heads, just on what the reopening's going to look like. So I think in some ways, it's been a good thing to face early on, because it's, I'm interacting with them, um, and really hearing the needs down to the most basic level of what they need to operate safely. And that certainly doesn't come without its challenges either. Not being open to the public is really difficult, especially when we're trying to meet virtually. Um, and we had only started meeting together, you know, since November. And then to have all of that change, you know, that, that's been a challenge, but um, all in all, I think it's been a pretty good um, first few months. I definitely could have done without the pandemic, but it is what it is. Um, I, I did make a quick list, I don't know if you want me to go through that right now, of um, you know, some of the stuff that isn't quite related to COVID, that I've, you know, gone back through and looked to see what has been accomplished in this short time here. Um, do, would you like me to go through that now, or do you wanna? Okay, uh, so really early on, I think the second week or first week possibly was the uh, the train crossing at Tina Lane. That was huge. That certainly started well, well, well before I got here, but that was a really nice thing to take part in. Um, and then right after that was the Westcom launch, and uh, just today, the another, another community on boarded today. So that is something great to be part of, um, and seeing that literally from the day we um, we went live with them going forward, that's been terrific. So I'm really uh, excited to see where that goes. Um, the LED phase one streetlight conversion, that's been completed. Uh, and I'm looking forward to what phase two will be uh, looking like, and that's probably gonna start by mid-June or end of June. Um, submitted a FY twenty twenty-one capital plan within the budgeted amount, um, and then submission of the FY twenty twenty-one budget within the select board goals, but then um, you know, a modification that happened at your May meeting as a result of the uh, COVID uh, reductions that we're estimating. Uh, early on in December, had created a code red employee notification group to um, provide employees direct information on emergency notifications or weather-related events. Um, work on the open space and recreation plan had started, and then it hit a brief hiatus just while we dealt with COVID, but I'm happy to say that that's um, reviving again. We should have a public forum by the end of June. Created an online boarding committee application so that residents could submit uh, via online means, instead of having to come into the office or download a form from the website. They can just fill it all out online and hit submit. Uh, the creation of the interactive select board agenda to link the documents directly, so that the board and the public saw all the same information. The Bliss and Laurel Park master landscape plan with the Conway School that I mentioned a little bit ago, that's being part of that has been um, been great, and it, I also was able to um, view both parks in February, did a walking tour of both, so I feel like I really have a good idea of what the Conway School is looking at before, you know, seeing their design plans this week. And um, taking part in the RFP process for the trash and recycling hauling, that five-year contract proved beneficial to go out to bid, so that was, I'm glad that we did that. Uh, hiring a new police chief that amid stall of this, that, that happened, um, and I think, you know, I think we'll all benefit from the selection of uh, chief stocks. And um, I'll have more information on this at your next meeting, but uh, while all of the COVID stuff has been happening, I've also been working hard alongside um, Rivermore Consulting, um, John Tortalot, who's been helping us prepare our MVP uh, action grant application, and that will be submitted uh, June eleventh is the deadline, so I'll have an update for you more substantial one at your June fifteenth meeting. Um, but I'm glad that that was able to still be completed and worked on while um, while dealing with all of this other pandemic-related stuff. So that was the twenty twenty accomplishments. I have a, another equally long list for twenty twenty-one that I'm looking forward to. But I, I don't wanna jump into that yet, if you wanna discuss any of this.
Okay, well, actually, just tell us what your, your goals are for twenty twenty-one, too, and then we'll bring all the guys. then we'll bring all the guys.
Sure, so I'll try to be quick on this one, I won't go into too much detail, but the COVID nineteen reopening, you know, that's, I guess, part of a goal, but more of a necessity at this point, but I'm really looking forward to what the new fiscal year will look like for us, in getting offices back open and running. Completing the LED streetlight project, completing the Green Communities Grant, and then, which enables us to apply for another one. I'm hoping to kick off a website refresh project and finish website training of all staff. Should be completing the general code e-codification, e-code online codification project in fiscal 2021. The, I'm hopeful that the Shared Health Services intermunicipal agreement will be presented to you for, we're starting on July first. Completion of the new DPW facility, and then decommissioning of the old facility, completion of the new adult center, plans for the reuse of Greenwood, the adult center side, completion of the open space and recreation plan, completion of landfill closure projects phase one and two, and then research on potential future use of the site as a solar facility or something else. Renewed pilot agreement with Bay Path, installation of electric vehicle chargers at some various spots, various points that I've identified. Renew the service level agreement for school and town IT services, completion of Wolf Swamp field design and construction, completion of a flag project for the town green, then I had started pre-COVID with the Veterans Advisory Council and our Veteran Service Officer. And then I definitely want to explore more about a possible townwide stormwater infrastructure analysis, as we look forward to more engineering projects, but I do need to do some more research on that first.
Sounds like a busy year. You didn't even mention all the work you've been doing on DPW and the adult center and the asbestos, you did a lot of work keeping that in line and dealing with the final charges, so thank you. I'm going to open it up to the board now. Richard Foster, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I don't really have any questions. It's a pretty ambitious work plan that she's completed this year and that she's outlined for next year. I think most of my comments were reflective of unbelievably seamless adjustment that our new town managers made in our community, and the benefits are, are just astounding. I mean, it's, it's such a pleasure to work with Lynn. You see it in these meetings, it's just an even tone, it's just a pleasure all the way around.
Thank you.
Mark Gold?
Yeah, I'm going to repeat a lot of what Richard said, and I can't be more thrilled that Lynn's joined Long Meadow as a town manager. I think we've done a, we did a great job hiring her, she's done a great job coming in here, I've had a chance to work closely with her, a couple of special projects, you know, streetlights and trash collection and a few other things, but, but just the tenor of what Lynn brings to the town, I think her communications, her mindset of working as a team of six people has just been phenomenal, and, you know, it, it, it just is reflected in what we all have to say about it in our performance review, and I think it's, it's interesting that there are five performance reviews, and they literally overlay one, one right over the other with the comments and the praise, and I think they're, they're all well-deserving, so don't let us down now you've got another, what, three years or something like that?
Thank you. Thanks.
Tom?
Yeah, I, again, has, it's been a great opportunity to work with you so far, Lynn, and I'm really excited about the future. It would have been nice to have a longer period of time to evaluate you in terms of writing this, and it would have been helpful for me to get some feedback from the department heads, as far as how they, you know, how they feel you're doing your job. But yeah, residents are overwhelmingly saying that, you know, they like the way you're doing things, they want you to run the town, you know, they're happy with that, and they see the, the relationship between the Select Board and you is progressing in a very positive direction. And yeah, so, yeah, welcome aboard, you know, this is the first evaluation, and hopefully the others will get better than this, so.
Thank you.
It's been a pleasure, Lynn. My last year, I'm glad we were able to spend it together. Sorry, it was under such stressful circumstances, but I've always said you were grace under fire, you just, you got it done. And I knew, if you were on the job, you were going to get it done, and something was, no matter how overwhelming it was, you very calmly did what needed to be done, and did not every, be able to bring everyone along with you. Every time I spoke to employees, you know, department heads, everyone said, Select Board did a good job. So I think, yeah, we're very happy to have you here, and though I'll be watching as a resident, I'm looking forward to the next, not three years, 20 years, so you can become part of a town institution. So welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, so that's your first town manager evaluation, wasn't too painful, was it?
No. No.
Any comments about her list of what she's looking for, for the upcoming year? I know you haven't goal set, but Mark, is that a thing?
Yeah, it's not so much her list, I think it's an ambitious list, but I think we need to touch on it all. I just wanted to get some feedback from Lynn on the process. I mean, it's a process we've used, you know, obviously, you're used to, you're probably used to other processes for feedback and performance feedback, and I would like to think that over the next couple of months, we could work together, if you don't like our process, help us modify it, so it's, it's more meaningful and instructive to you. For me, the intent is to help you grow, identify the areas that, you know, you're, not just that you're doing great in, but the areas that you need to continue to work on, and so whatever you can do to help us through that process, I'd welcome.
That'd be great, I would, I would welcome that as well, definitely. I would like to know, you know, my first go-around as a town manager, so I would welcome any of the feedback, I'm not, I'm not shy to receiving, you know, criticism or helpful, helpful points that you think should be done differently. I'm open to all of that, I just hope that we can keep an open line of communication, because I don't know what you may need or want or need me to change unless you tell me. So I'd rather hear it directly from you than learn that you're upset about something. So I'm, I'm open to hearing it, and would welcome the, the communication to be both ways.
We're usually not shy, so I'm sure they'll tell you. And any other comments?
Have you had something?
Yes, Paul.
You know, obviously, it's been a pleasure to work with Lynn, she's been very easy to get along with, I've certainly enjoyed it. You know, folks know that I had a strong relationship with Steven, but I think I've developed that with Lynn over the last eight or eight months or so that she's been here. I can be quite frank with her, maybe too frank at some point in time, I ask her if I'm going a little overboard at times, but she, you know, she, she listens. But the thing that I do want to bring out is, part of her contract does include her compensation, and it says annual increases will be considered after the June evaluation, so I didn't know if you had that conversation in mind for today, or, or for the next meeting, but I did want to point out that, that that should be taken into consideration very soon for her.
Thank you for pointing that out. And also, one of the things we do have is, because of the COVID nineteen crisis, Lynn was at her desk, I mean, I don't even know if she went home weekends, she was there constantly working, and was, did not feel comfortable taking her vacation time, and we're looking to be, her be able to carry over her vacation time to the next fiscal year, because she, she doesn't want to just all of a sudden disappear to take, use her vacation time, because there's still a lot of work to be done in the transition. She was looking to see if the board approved for a change for her to be able to carry over her vacation time to the next fiscal year.
Do you have the amount of time, Lynn?
Yes, it's, it's thirteen days, the contract allows me to carry over five, so I, I guess I'm really asking for, for eight days there.
Okay, Marie, I'd like to place a motion that we, we approve an extension and a transfer to next year of eight vacation days for our town manager.
Okay. Okay, Tom, seconded it. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote?
I did, I did have one, I did have one discussion, Marie. Lynn, you've just finished up your year, so there's no more extension required, is that correct?
I'm not sure I know what you mean.
In other words, you're extending the eight days, is there any, is there any possibility of additional days being placed on that?
In other words, on July first, is it going to be 10 days that you may need?
I don't think so, I think after July first, I just started accruing five months. This had been, this was the balance of what it would have been from November to end of June, had I taken any time in that block. And I had talked to Marie by email and said, you know, originally, before we hit COVID, I had intended to possibly take some time during April school vacation week, when my kids were off, and then also once school got out at the end, mid-June, because to bridge the gap between camps starting, but I, that, none of that is, is happening. And I also did not feel it was responsible to take any time off while we were literally dealing with changing guidelines every single day. So, sorry, that's a long way to answer your question, but I don't, I don't think it's going to add any other time between now and the end of June.
Okay, Marie, thank you, we can go with the vote.
Marie, I have a question, if I could, Lynn, are there other employees in town who are in the same situation, who, and do you have the authority to extend them, or should we be doing that as a part of a policy?
Yes, my understanding is, I do have the authority to do that, and I did do that in, I think, two weeks ago, maybe, I had carried over everybody's vacation accruals through the end of next fiscal year, so that we don't have a rush of people trying to use all their time before the end of the calendar year, so we spaced it out further to give them time to use it.
Thanks.
Okay, roll call vote?
Marie?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Much. Did I, did we get everything that was on the agenda for tonight? Because I jumped around a bit. I think I did. Okay, so we're looking to go into executive session to conduct strategy sessions and preparations for negotiation for non-keeping personnel, regards to the town manager and approval of private minutes not to reconvene an open session. Is there a motion to approve going into executive session?
So move, Richard Foster. Second, Richard Foster.
Okay, roll call vote? Okay, right off the bat, I'll do the.
I'm back. There is unmute. Who made the motion? I have Richard doing both.
No, Mark Gold did the motion, Richard seconded it.
Okay. Marie?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you very much for joining us. Again, there's a lot of meetings coming up on Thursday at seven o'clock, it's the Bliss Park Plan. On next Monday at the eighth, at seven o'clock, is our first community forum on the morning. Hope you can join us then. Thank you. So Lynn, can you?